Have you seen stop sign knock down? And I'm sure, I'm guessing it was from a storm yesterday. They didn't hopefully lost.
ACCA first today.
So far for me.
Oh, I didn't tell you that. Tile that's lining, that's lining dry as well. Or whatever that. Where up for Chris Harg?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I like, when he sent that, I don't see. This pad had complained to me here a while back about that. I need to get that zone. Up in Minnesota, we're speaking in a town.
Okay.
I got something.
Did you guys see the human? I like.
I'm getting okay.
You might, you might check her.
Hit it down to me. Ten o'clock.
Okay, you want me to go perhaps some water?
That's not good for that history.
Yeah.
It's years till Friday they can.
Melissa's gonna hide, she's not in here, but so he's gonna come, I told him to have her come in and to get you.
Dear Matt.
Somebody tried to take the whole door off, that's not so bad.
She was just trying to make an entrance.
You'll make it.
Appreciate that.
If he's on the right page.
I'll get there sooner or later.
I think we had the same agenda today.
Sometimes my fingers go faster than my brain on this thing.
Sometimes.
Yeah. Is that your backup Casey?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
You feel scared now, me?
Yep.
I can tell.
It is eight o'clock, let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public discussion, we have a lot of public in here today, Mr. Casey.
I got a couple questions for him. First one, I would like a response back to each one of these ones on record. You would please? Have any of you, because if you have, I don't think you should be able to vote on this. Any of you invested in this company, CO2 line? Or take donations to a meal, coffee, anything?
No.
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 All right. My second question, fairly goes to Mr. Stacker. Monday night after the board adjustment meeting, you got a call from a lady, certain citizen, want to know how you were going to, if you were back us people on the paper. Which us people are what voted you guys in, you work for us. And your answer to her, was you give me half, give me a petition with half of these votes, seventy-five hundred signatures on it, and I will think about going that way, I will think about. Did you say that, and why did you say that?
So, that's not exactly a direct quote, and that's a very small portion of a conversation. I clarified the the suggestion of is if a petition is brought around, um, what would it take? I said, I would not count signatures from someone in Des Moines or halfway around the world. If it was Cassous County citizens, that would be one thing. But that is, that is correct numbers, because that would be half of the county. But, um, that's a very small piece of the conversation.
See, when I was on that board, rest for any signatures. Ten of those people came to me and said, we want your help. Let's go. You hired me for, let's go. So they made, it's like you're, why do you need seventy-five hundred? That don't make sense to me, you don't need any signatures to back your people. Yeah, granted, your line up there, it's as big as the line down here. Mr. Whacker and Mr. Nap get the big line. Well, you said it don't make sense. It sounded like you made up your mind very long time ago. That's why I asked that first question. Basically, have you been paid off for?
No.
All right, I'll let you know.
Well, I'll jump in, because I was that lady, so.
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm Stacy Bash.
Yeah.
Yeah, Stacy Bash, I reside here in Algonon. So, uh, yeah, I was the lady that called the, uh, called Kyle and just wanted to have some education on, I know of a lot of people who are highly against this, right? A lot of farmers, a lot of people. Obviously, a lot of people that are here are speaking for that. But, uh, when I ask Kyle, when I ask you about this, I'm gonna be honest, I feel too. Um, and of course, it's easy to lie and say that, no, I didn't get any money, um, under the table. I personally feel that somebody has given me money under the table, um, because of your stance, um. I just felt it was very demeaning about the conversation. I know that you think that there's all these people, I think the numbers are skewed on what percent of the people have said that they want to do this or sign contracts according to you is what you said. But truly, when I asked you, what is it going to take? Because you guys do work for the people, you're in charge of our lives, our safety, and our, and our requests is what you guys are in charge of. We vote you in to speak for we the people. So when I asked you what that was going to take, you said if I had half of the county's signatures on a petition, then that you would think twice about it. But it was just a thinking thing, and again, I'm looking on this. It's not about thinking, it's like, wow, if even all these people in the room came to you and said that, Kyle, you, you are here for the people. So you guys are servants of the people who will be voting, we rely on you, we trust you. So Josh, you have Algonon. Your, your role is not to do whatever the, you know, the alumni of the supervisors to push you into certain votes. I mean, Josh, you, you have a good mind, you are, got voted in, you have to speak for the town of Algonon. We have many people here who live in this kind of, this community, who are very concerned about what's going to happen. I applaud the judges who are now finally bringing up the constitution. So now, we're finally getting back to what our founding fathers initiated, is that our constitution gives us the rights. They do not have the rights to start taking away our land, start to take away some of our freedoms that were initiated to us. You must uphold our constitution as well, not just the judges. So that's what I had to say today, so, thank you.
If I don't see anyone else, we will have some information from our road foreman.
Do you want to approve the agenda?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Stacker, second by?
I'll second.
Whacker, any discussion on the agenda in minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, unanimous. Now we'll talk about with the road foreman.
I don't know if you have any specific questions for the road foreman or not, but, uh, one thing I will be discussing during the discussion with county engineer is uh, four ten-hour working days for secondary road department and discussing with the road foreman. Last week in our meeting, uh, road foreman shot foreman, we believe that, uh, that the time is near where we can start working that way, so. Uh, if the board has any questions to the road foreman about road conditions or anything, this could probably be appropriate time to ask them, otherwise we can discuss it during discussion time.
Trunk will get ahold of you about loads of dirt.
Me?
Yeah, oh, he's gonna, I told him to call you, see if you could bring him a load for a tile hole up in Sherman.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard anything.
Oh, he's gonna get ahold of you, probably.
Drainage district repair?
Yeah.
Do you know what drain or anything like that?
There's a request.
Try to make sure that.
There's a request, yeah, request made out. I'll get you.
Was it trunk Kyle or?
Yeah.
One repairing it.
What's that?
Is it trunk Kyle who made the request or?
No, I did.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. Brad's actually the one.
Yeah, Brad, trunk Kyle probably.
Yeah. You aren't gonna do it till it dries up.
How much rain did you guys get up there last night?
Half inch or something.
You guys been out on the roads yet, see if there's any washouts, storm damage, anything like that?
Yeah, man, okay, we're just starting to know right now. So that's a good sign.
Yeah.
If there's any any damage, I guess. We, we had one, one issue where it's equipment that's gone down a road and caused damage, but I don't think storm. Yeah. Haven't, you know. Very surprising.
Bill, I left you a voicemail this morning, I saw a stop sign down on my way into town here this morning. It was two miles west of Bancroft by the old airport, north side.
Oh, okay. So. We appreciate those coming to our office, we write up work orders for sign crew.
Yeah.
So Bill's gonna go now to the our office and when those, when you, uh, sometimes facts get changed in the middle of group, two or three conversations, so. Call our office, we appreciate.
Four-way bridge is getting bumpy again.
Yeah, well, I would have a pleasure with it. And it's getting so hard to, it's going all the way to stand.
It's gonna be hard to hold, the trucks turn there and. Anything else for the road foreman? Thank you, guys.
There it goes. Thanks.
Everybody had a chance to go through the handwritten claims on their computer? Do I have a motion to approve the handwritten claims? Motion by Plant. Second by Carter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Show that, record show that we acknowledge the transfers made by the auditor. Fourteen thousand, one hundred and fourteen from general basic to secondary road and a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents from rural basic to secondary roads. There's no question, it'll go in the record. Next on the agenda, approve the liquor license for rebate of Iowa. INC. I would move to approve.
Second.
Second by Plant, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous. Next. Prove the Suthard County courthouse annex lease for early childhood development.
The yearly lease. He signed, this is the year.
I think it's a hundred dollars.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Hundred dollars will be good.
I'll second.
Second by Stacker, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous. You want to call Doug?
Dr. Lisa. Hey Lisa, this is the boardroom, um, we are at here, Doug's just walking in. Nice to meet you. Yep, thanks.
Boarding ring down.
Uh, we are up to zoning ordinance. As this liquid pipeline that's going to try and cross Cassous County. We are up to a motion to approve the zoning ordinance that has been presented to us by the zoning board. Doug?
No, no, we're just having discussions.
Just discussionable, okay, I got motion discussions. I'll cross off the motion, go to discussion.
Yeah.
Doug, discussion, have you heard any comments?
I guess the board, the planning and zoning commission presented a report to the board supervisors. So that's kind of where where that the plan is only commission has completed their work.
Okay.
Well, just I think we thought to think about its reasons, the wants to get involved in, she got to. Take the paper, right?
Board supervisors need to bow to your process, which is either accept, change, deny what planning and zoning commission's writing, report. So it's, it's, uh, the board supervisors now need to act on what they would likely want us to, how they want us should read.
But I guess I'll start off and serve as comments made in regards to conversations I've had here earlier already. Um, I, I do have a portion of an opinion formed on this already. I think it would be irresponsible if someone on this board didn't in any form at this point, considering we've been talking about it for months. Um, one of my concerns in the ordinance as it was written, hazardous liquid is defined the same as Iowa code for seventy-nine B point two, unless otherwise defined there, which means crude oil, refined petroleum products, liquefied petroleum gases, and hydro ammonia, liquid fertilizers, liquefied carbon dioxide, alcohols, and coal slurries, which is on page A eight of appendix A. If you look at the Iowa utilities board map of pipelines in Iowa, um, we have nine of our communities in this county that have a pipeline either in their city limits or very close to their city limits that would fall under that category. Um, that does not have a two-mile setback on any of those, or two and a half mile as it was originally proposed. Um, I have significant concerns about this ordinance for multiple reasons, but that would be the first one I would start with. But I have done a significant amount of research into this, I've looked at a lot of things that have been discussed in and outside this boardroom. And the, I, I never shared any specifics as far as X number percentage of landowners or individuals have signed agreements or have invested, but I have definitely heard from both sides of the equation on this story. And there's no way around that, that's just a fact of life, so.
Your concern would be based on future development of other pipeline industry and within the county beyond carbon.
Future development and previous infrastructure that's already in place would not comply with this.
Believe that would be grandfathered in though, wouldn't it?
It, it would, this would not affect that current infrastructure, but if you applied it to it, it would not conform.
What you're saying is if, if there's a oil line or a canap or gas line or something that in the future would want to come within two and a half miles of Dakota, that would, that's what, that's what.
It would not be a possibility.
Yep, yep, okay.
You'd have to give a variance to the order.
And the supportive adjustment can give a variance to that.
Right.
If I, yes, right, correct?
Yeah.
If the project was necessary, you know.
Yeah. It's, it's my understanding that, uh, the reason we have to get it done this quickly is if we want to go before the utilities board and file agreements with them and to be in on the public discussion.
Uh, no, that would be part of the intervention process.
That started back in the sun, right? But isn't the hearings, you want to get involved in the hearings, you have to have this done.
Not the ordinance, that's, that's the intervention without a UBL, which we are on for summits.
Summit.
Yeah. So they're two separate issues.
Where are the discussions? We got a timeline to.
Right.
Get this done, we need to see it. Get it done.
We're gonna move forward, it'd be better to do it sooner, later.
Later. Got the details, the full session.
Right, yeah, and we all have to be cognizant of that, um.
But I think we, I think we talked about it. Feel like we should move forward with it. Take the next step to.
Roger, do you want to share your research about attorney fees?
Well, yeah, it was brought up to, to ICAP would pay eighty-five percent, well, that's not for sure.
That's just very much not for sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, you move forward to this, you're going to have six-digit attorney fees. I'm gonna pay for it.
And if I understand correctly, even of all the counties who have had ICAP cover, insurance that they are close to six-digit attorney fees even with that.
Right. We have no process other than to tax. And with our current budget, we didn't allow six bigger attorney fees.
That would have to come in the form of an amendment if we want that out.
Um, you'd have to find some way to tax the people, where, where you're gonna put it under.
Right.
Yeah, with the current law, you know, going into effect, we're gonna be over to three dollars and fifty cents on general basics, so where we got taxed?
We got two million dollars, we need to.
That's, that's my concern, where are you gonna find the money to pay for the attorney?
Right.
And I don't know if you guys have gotten to your email yet, but
Yep.
The email from summit with quotes from the transcript from Shelby County um, has some very concerning language in there.
Yeah.
Hey. That's, I would say from experience that when a judge says something like that in court in comments, their ruling will probably not be too far off of that.
I'm, I'm opposed to summit coming through the county, but I'm also opposed to spending, uh, a hundred thousand dollars or ten thousand, twenty thousand, and thirty thousand on attorney fees out of the county budget that we don't have. So I'm opposed to two things.
Okay.
And I mean, to repeat for the record, I'm very opposed to eminent domain. I don't know if anyone wants to go back in the record to look at who brought that up and how it was brought up, but, um, we sent a letter to the Iowa utilities board opposing eminent domain very early on, months ago.
Yeah.
I don't even remember how many months ago, but I think I think a lot of this is above our pay grade to some extent, it's, it's much higher regulations than what we deal with. I don't, I don't have scientists at my disposal to tell me what's gonna happen if or when an event happens with a pipeline of this magnitude. An event happens with a pipeline of this magnitude. I, I don't know how we could even begin to put numbers on something that we don't have any way to justify. I think that was some of the comments you had shared from Dr. Van Tiger with the Board of Health as far as a number. There was not science to back up a specific number and I would have to fall in line with that.
The other comment, we have a case in Brammer County and in Shelby, Shelby County in court right now. All of those two cases are decided, are gonna decide the rest of the cases. So do we actually have to spend the money in Cassuth County to go to court when those two are already doing it? That's the question, I, I, I'll ask anybody for an opinion.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was talking about. Set it sideline, see what happens with the other two or three counties that are. Are in, get our in court.
In, in some ways, I think would be prudent for us to wait until those two cases are settled. Instead of spending. Any money.
If, if those two cases are successful. I would feel. Much more comfortable about going forward with something like this.
But it would, it would.
It, it would set precedent, like simple.
I mean, I'd be really comfortable going ahead and doing it.
Matter of how many months is it gonna be before one of them settles? Nobody knows. So then are you waiting? To a point where. You should, you should have had something in place or not, I.
The other, the other thing is, is it can go forward without landowner, landowner participation.
Yes, I can with eminent domain.
If, yeah, but I'm saying with that, but if the eminent domain does not happen.
Then it's not happening.
And so there's, there's another issue and, you know. We don't think that there's, there's. Landowner participation, you know, to, to move forward without eminent domain. If the state goes forward with eminent domain. Not feel too comfortable being a, a state, you know, legislator, state capital because.
Well, they, they dropped it because they didn't want to take hold of it. At the state cap.
It, it did, it got through the house, it did not even get brought up for discussion in the senate, so.
So that's a year away from, unless I, unless the Utilities Board can. Pass it though, they could use eminent domain that they, that their board would pass if they.
Iowa Utilities Board. And that's plain and simple, it's out of our control.
Well, the whole things. We, we had no control whether it goes, goes. Those passes are not, it's entirely up to the state and the landlords.
The, the two main things we have control over are drainage district, crossings and secondary road crossings. I've not heard anyone argue those two points.
Yeah, that is a problem. Up with a hundred thousand dollars potentially in lawyer.
Well, that's what it is, we're ready for Shelby.
We got no, we got no way to do it.
And the other, the other point of discussion with the timeline is. If, if our ordinance was fully enacted today. Whatever time we would get sued hypothetically by each company, whatever, but. If our ordinance was enacted today, we would be behind those two in the court schedule no matter what. So we're going to get decisions on those two cases before we would ever get a decision on ours, no matter what. So it would still follow precedent of those other situations. It just.
We'd be in the same court system, Shelby.
Yeah, and.
We're in the same.
But, but either way, we're behind them on the timeline. So. I don't feel it's appropriate to pour our money in the exact same path they're pouring their money right now. Especially with a lot of other factors around it.
I think it's the same idea as the. You know, intervening with Summit versus Navigator, that Summit is. You know, steps ahead in the process and so how that outcome looked.
Exactly.
Was gonna be how the other pipeline looked, you know, as far as the intervention.
Whatever, whatever Summit gets.
I, I guess I can see your point there.
So I think for the public, I mean, I think it's obvious, basically, most of us on this board are opposed to of this happening. But we also have to care how we spend taxpayer money and. Catch it for a hundred thousand or dollars of taxpayer money is a serious, serious, serious number to contemplate. And we have no other ways but to pass it on to the taxpayers and. Really don't add next year, the state's already enacted. We have to, we have to cut two million dollars out of our budget next year.
Well, on Jack, on top of that, the. One of the quotes from the transcript was the judge asking if Shelby County had the ability to pay hundreds of millions of dollars in damages. If they find a cause of action. I don't think we, this county can pay hundreds of millions of dollars in damages to a pipeline company. Because of an ordinance we enact.
But they must be a little nervous that it wouldn't be threatening. The judge didn't really be threatening.
That shouldn't be brought up, I mean, that's, that's.
I think we're between rock and hard.
I think, I think we need to tread cautiously. You know, we still have time to enact this ordinance if we, if we, if we need to. Maybe need to just wait a little bit longer to see how these court cases come out.
My question is, can we take steps to get there but not fully sign it? You know, so if we, you know. Take the necessary steps to do the, the readings and everything, but pause at that point where. You know, just before we can sign it and then that way, you know, if it comes down, the. It's successful for, you know, Brammer County. We've already taken care of that, those public readings, the, you know, the.
You're kind of saying, doing everything except.
Except for final approval and then we can kind of pause at that point. And then once we get word that, you know, Brammer County is successful, then, then we can go ahead and sign it.
There's a timeline between.
Say, I don't think you start that.
That is my question. Sure.
Good question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
I'm looking at, we need to. Take a little more time and hopefully those other jurisdictions. See how far they go and we still have something, we still have time to enact this if we. Feel like we have to. Yeah, we, we kind of tried to arrive in a hard spot.
Well, I'm disappointed that the state didn't take it out.
Well, I am too.
The place this belongs at a state, not at county level, because every county can have a different opinion. I mean, this is ridiculous.
It's not a public utility.
It is. It, it should, it should never have been a discussion for us.
Business, it's just.
I would fully agree with all that. It should have, it should have been a conversation in Des Moines.
Yeah, it should have never, never come to this, to the county level because we don't have the power to do things that the state does.
No, and even, even on the process side of things, when, when they look at doing a bill, they have access to. They can do study bills and I don't know all the details behind it, but they can get. They can get teams of people to get research and do, do, um, information gathering for them. That they can look at a summary and make a decision off of that rather than spending. Forty or eighty hours a week trying to dig through this, that and everything else. We, we have nothing that's even comparable to that. We hire attorneys and professionals and everything else and. It, it should have, it should never be a conversation here as far as I'm concerned and. And I don't think it's. Really a conversation here either way with the stuff that's on books. I mean. Federal and state levels already have. Stuff for this, whether you look at FEMSA or IUB or any of that. I, it, it's never been in our wheelhouse before and I don't think it should be in our wheelhouse now.
I think one of the things that we can take away from this whole situation is you need to contact the state representatives and start asking them why they didn't take this on. Uh, you need to get them on the phone, email.
And, and I will say Henry Stone has been very, um, vocal. He represents a majority of this county in the House side of things. He has been pushing for ninety percent for eminent domain. Which if I was in his position, I would do the same thing. But it got to the senate side and I believe it didn't make it out of committee.
No, it never made it out. The chairman of the committee dropped it.
Are they still coming up here Saturdays?
Once a month.
Are they still coming up on it? So they do.
That was, that was just twice, I think that's done. I'm pretty sure that's done for the session.
That was just for, you know, prior to the funnel, the.
Senator Goff was against it, he was in favor of the ninety percent.
Yeah, and I, I mean, in my conversations with Rowley, I would say he's. Probably in a similar opinion than most of us. I'm not gonna speak on his behalf, but. I don't think beating down his door is gonna be successful for any of us, but, um, it's definitely a. Conversation with the people on the senate that dropped it, specifically the chairman, but.
Yeah, Houston, Polk County, wasn't he?
I don't remember, um, but sometimes that's what it takes is going to the Capitol and talking to. People that aren't our representatives and. They, they have to represent their district and the whole state in that regard too, but.
I would say don't leave out the governor's office either.
No.
Correct.
Attack at the governor's office and, and because the ball can roll back from that way too, if she hears from enough people. You know, she can go back and, and figure out what happened too. Nevertheless, uh, state dropped the ball and here we are and, and deciding how to move forward and our. Our number one thing is, is the safety of our people and there's no question about that. We also need to be fiscally responsible in doing so and while we, there is some. Little room in cases of, of protecting the safety of residents. It is, it is a hard, hard thing and what to do, how to report and. Guess I'm not opposed to. I'm not opposed to the idea of waiting until. Brammer County or Shelby County would have a ruling. My concern is just that. I think it would be good to have something in place. Even, even I'm here worried about the ordinance too, you know, even if it looked a little bit different and as far as how we go about moving forward, but. But, uh. I just think it's important to at least have. Something in place. Rather than wait for the last minute. And rush, 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 we gotta get something done and. You know what I'm saying, I guess.
Well, so I think suggesting that we change the setbacks on the ordinance today.
Is about, you know, the biggest concern of either side, you know, whether our, our side. For regulation and also from company standpoint is, um, how that affects them. Is that a conversation we want to have? Or is it a general feeling of the boards that we want to. Able it, I, for lack of a better term, until.
Problem I have about this, we, you know, DNRs, you know, we have setbacks for hog refinements. And this is thousand times more dangerous than any hog confinement. So we're saying, so you're saying we can set this closer to, to somebody's house?
Well, I wasn't saying.
Well, we changed the setbacks. Right, and, but, you know, we have setbacks on hog confines. And, uh, they're not. Barely as dangerous as something like this if there's, you know, that light breaks.
But I mean, even on, even on that point, I would compare it to what I just said before, at the state level, they have access to. Experts and research and all that stuff to put, put into coming up with those numbers, I mean. There's a multitude of reasons why this is different than a hog build, but. I don't think transitioning a number from one topic to another is doing our due diligence for. Either side. I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable saying this is, this is the number that's appropriate, good or bad, plus or minus. I, I don't, I don't feel that's something I'm comfortable with either way and that's. That's also one thing I struggle with the ordinance. I don't, I don't know how. That would be justified whether.
Let's. Down the station somewhere.
Well, I mean, I was, it was, I was at planning a hearing when, when it was discussed.
The pipelines know what the safe distances are, but they're not, they're not willing to release that.
Well, I don't think there is a safe distance, Jack.
Well, I don't.
Depends upon the wind, it depends upon the weather.
I mean, there are numbers out there, but nobody's willing to share.
Because there's too many variables, you can't say the given number. I get, my problem is I don't want the darn thing, no, no way. But how, how do we get there? That's my problem.
But I don't, I don't think we can enact something just to. Cut it off, especially on the topic that, that's why, when you look at the definition of a hazardous pipeline. All the current infrastructure we have, I, I don't think we can just say, no, we're not gonna do this. I, I don't think that's legal.
That's what we're doing by giving a two and a half mile setback.
And that's why they're challenging it in court everywhere.
So, what are we saying? No pipeline, aren't we?
You can say that and.
That's the way I think it, I'm just saying, I don't want the darn thing, so we give you a two and a half mile setback and then we have to. Challenge it in court. Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess a couple of comments, I want you guys, and don't reply to it, I want you to ask yourself, what are the highest scores? And then, um, I want you to consider, I'm gonna pick on Dana, if you, uh, live where he lives and it's gonna be turned feet from your house. Um, and then you talk about litigation being in a hundred thousand dollar range. You're basing that off of something, so they can tell you that they're gonna sue you, but if Brammer County or Shelby County. Wins their court case, chances are yours is done, they're gonna drop it. And a hundred thousand dollars to me, I'm not for sure on this, but I think one department head in, in the county got thirty thousand dollar raise this year. So I think as a board, you guys are all intelligent enough to come up with that money to support a large portion. Of constituents. Just think about that.
Yeah, go ahead. Something said earlier about, uh, this is precedent, future pipelines coming through, like if a gas pipeline was to come through. Gas pipeline is a resource of people. This is a investment pipeline. So to me, there's a big difference between a natural gas line coming by or this. One is an investment, one is more, we need that LP, we need that stuff.
So how would you separate, how is that defined in this proposed ordinance? That's not defined in this ordinance.
You'd you'd have to give variants. To anybody that.
But it's, but it's separated that.
No, I don't know how you can separate.
And another thing. I get a lot of calls, I talk to Matt a lot, I hear a lot of stuff, Peters, he's on the phone all the time. With the money situation, there's a lot of people mad. That you can't spend ten thousand dollar lawyer bill. You know, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollar lawyer bill, but you can send supervisor to Washington DC for four or five thousand dollars. And we get nothing out of that, I only got absolutely nothing. I've heard that many, many times. That's in these people's heads and it's in their craw. Just think about that one. And when you spent that money, you had to amend the budget because the money wasn't there. So why can't you amend the budget again and give us money to run a pipeline? So I went out there, cause I hear, I can sit, I hear a lot of theater.
I I don't disagree with you, Casey, the problem is we haven't got a place to amend the budget. We haven't got a category to pay the attorney fees unless we go back and redo the budget all over again almost. We have no bucket. Which bucket?
We have a line.
We have a line for it, yeah.
We do.
Yeah, so.
Many of us have contacted the governor and our legislators, so don't think that we haven't gone to the state level. We have done numerous amounts with that. And all over the state. They are wanting us to go to the grassroots, get back to our counties. I know you're probably thinking the states trying to pass the book back to the counties, you guys are the county trying to pass the book back to the state. But it does come back to to our county. You do have the right to say yes or no to ordinance. And really, counties like Shelby, they're looking for other counties to back them up. The more counties that say stop this and say no to this, there's power in numbers, correct? So why are we just letting Shelby, oh, you just hang out there on your own and we might, we might send an ordinance if you win your case. What does that say to to them, those Shelby County residents, what Cusworth County residents, we're we're too scared? Or are we willing to back them up? So we have reached out to numerous people, so don't think that we haven't. And we are reaching out to you because we were told by them to come back to you. So that's why we're here today. There's no reason, I agree with them, what what value are you gonna place on life and what value are you placing on these farmers' lands? They're gonna lose way more. If you add up everybody's land, that's way more than what lawyer's fee is gonna be. So I don't think we're gonna have a problem figuring out where this, so what if you have to go back to the budget? You are protecting the lives and you're speaking for the people.
So you're saying our state representatives are telling you to come to the counties. Our local legislators. And that's in writing? Long calls?
Go ahead.
So a comment to what Stacy said, I personally have been to the Capitol. And have made numerous attempts to talk to other legislators down there and the governor. And there's people in this room that I seen down there when I was there, and there's people that are in presidency that are there, so we have made. Attempts to be down there and like Stacy just said, we were sent home to talk to you guys, that's why we're here.
Yeah, that was kind of a chicken way for them to handle it too, though, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, they dumped it.
But here we are.
Down there and I don't agree that they sent us back to you guys, but the problem is, that's why we're here today. We have been personally in the Capitol building for a year and a half on this thing before we came back to you guys.
I appreciate you guys.
Go ahead, state your name.
Boomsden, and they did not want to release it because of terrorist threat. And I got to think, wow. Pipeline for terrorists. And it would be very hard. So we talked about homeland security, I'm throwing this out because I don't think I've heard this discussed, but he he himself said this is dangerous. Can't let these studies come out, even though Nancy here. They need to do it, I guess, on our own. It wouldn't be too hard for terrorists to take this out, so as we talk about these things. It came about and figure out it can be done in multiple places. Hospital is not far, these communities are very, very close, so. As we kind of think things through a little bit, where is our homeland security? Where is our security when he's pointing it out? Dangerous. Then I want you guys to think about something. Uh I know Cozy Grove is gonna come to find you, but. The counties being served. They have between four to six hundred kids that hear that person, fourth graders. They would stand a chance. And so I I know money, hundred thousand, yes, that, but Stacy's right, you know, we just gonna stay back. Somebody else can do something, they get left off home. And I think, you think about four to six hundred fourth graders. Taking the whole class. I don't, I I don't know what what are we doing?
Well, I think as you said, but there's other, there's other things being worked on to reduce the carbon. You know, and. Options out there. And and so that's, that's another, I, there's other things being worked on. The other issue is, is that it also, you know. That uh, but even by doing this, it's gonna have such a minimal effect on the carbon. In the air. Really isn't gonna happen, in fact, there's too many other things around the set.
Can you, as our supervisors, because they sent you from the Capitol. Here, and all these people saying we tried, we tried, they sent us to you again, can you now? Calling the representatives and reporting that we cannot do this without you agreeing with us and working together to do this. Not because that's the constituency of your community.
We should, we should just send you right back to the State House again, you know, and tell, tell, tell the governor that she shouldn't accept money if you ran instead. That's where the problems start. It it's all about big money and Rensselaer polished the wheels in Des Moines with a lot, a lot of money to the governor and different people. So it's back to big money, let's just accept the fact.
We can argue the pros and cons all day, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Go ahead, yeah.
That's only, I've had several people tell me, even if nobody dies and this gets passed through, they're gonna sue the county. Actually, they're gonna sue the board supervisor, she might do a job. I've had several guys tell me that. But I mean, either way, it's a cost money. I mean, that you, you guys might all win every fight, but you gotta hire a lawyer, you know, it's still.
But you know, we're in law lawsuits all the time. Yeah, you know how they work.
People tell me that they're. They're talking about coming after you.
We're used to it.
But what I was gonna say, we can argue the pros and cons, you know, of the pipeline and if there's other options and whatnot, all day long, but uh. I guess pertaining to the ordinance. How are we gonna move forward? Are there any changes that we as a board? Desire to make or things should be made, or are we just? Are you guys just wanting to? Believe it as it is. I I mean, I would, my opinion is I. I would like to move forward with something. Uh I don't, I don't want to just sit around and and wait and. You know, be the fly on the wall for when something does happen. But I, I, you know, that's up to you guys too.
I'm fine with the ordinance as it's written, because I don't really wanna start doing anything other than you want the zoning commission brought to us. And it's just saying we don't want a pipeline, which is what everybody tells me. They really do not want a pipeline in the county, so why should we change your ordinance? That's my opinion. Mr. Stecker, your opinion will go down the line.
I'm, I'm very concerned about legal ramifications with this, um I. I'm, wouldn't, would never answer the question of what's a life worth. I think that's my position on that's been fairly clear through EMS conversations. But um. This is outside of our wheelhouse as far as I'm concerned for a short summary.
I, yeah, I, looking at the ordinance, I don't see the, any changes that we would make would change an outcome. You know, so I don't think that we'd need to change the ordinance at all, um and I. Do like the idea of getting the ball rolling on something. And, you know, moving along with the next step. I'm. I think the only thing I would change in regards to the ordinances, in regards to roads and drainage, um. I believe the fees should be higher. But.
We did change that for drainage profession, we raised to be. Seventy-five hundred.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, I misspoke there. But. I'm, I'm willing to move forward. With an ordinance, uh. I think safety is. Most valuable thing and. Again, with all these other counties. Passing ordinances and then being involved in litigation too. Even in passing an ordinance, we can still. You know, we're we're part of a collective fight, it's not just Cusworth County spending millions of dollars. And that's just, that's just my opinion, I, I think it, it's worth moving forward and going through the process. I I understand, and the people need to understand that if the state comes out with something, if Fenza comes out with something, we can't. You can't fight that, I mean, that that's over, that's a higher authority.
So if the utility board rules in favor of Summit and Navigator, your position would be to fold then?
Uh other, other than in regards to roads and drainage, I don't know what else we. We, we could continue in the ordinance if the state gave them permission to. I, I mean, that's a big question that I have.
That is, the the elephant in the room is the green or utilities.
Right. Just think, being that the bucket is passed to the county, we should do what we can while we have the opportunity to do something. That's, that's my thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's uh, there's some good points made, you know, uh. Some other ways that we spend money. Probably had the ability to. Do a budget amendment, you know, this year yet. Next year would be a different story, but I guess we'll face the budget next year. We cut, we already know we're probably gonna make some deep cuts next year, so I guess we'll face that while it's up there, but um. I do, the other comment was, you know. These other counties. Probably you feel like they're. Being thrown to the wolves, because, you know, the other, the other counties aren't joining again and.
Well, there's some towns that have a whole bunch of it already, these ones all signed already and they're not fighting it. There's more counties, I think, that extended it and have fought it.
It's going here from the constituents or that uh. Don't worry about the money. You have to raise taxes to do it. They'll accept that. People say we should look forward.
I think fair statement with the amount of, just in the amount of raises that we're given to. Within the county this year, it's more than. A hundred thousand dollars. Well, maybe not.
And I, I'm not, I'm not gonna say a hundred thousand dollars is the um deciding factor at all for me, that's. That's a portion, if anything, but. Is not, not the entirety of my decision by any means.
The thing is too, is it can go above that.
Yeah, yeah, we were told anywhere from. Six figures to a million.
Yep.
And I guess my point would be before it got to the million, we would have stopped the lawsuit.
Right.
Is that a general consensus?
I would sure hope so.
Cause I don't think you wanna spend a million dollars taxpayer's money.
I, and I think we need to. Look at the budget and have an amendment before we get to a certain level or set. Certain dollar move for beginning. Limit, I don't know. If, I don't know if others in Cooney would even do that or not, but. I think we need to be watching that a little bit.
Yeah.
Didn't we sign something quite a while ago? If Shelby's getting sued a hundred thousand, all the people that sign that page, we all share the expense.
That, that agreement was signed, but that does not share litigation for ordinance, we are on our own for that. No, that is only for intervening at the Iowa Utilities Board. We are on our own a hundred percent for a county ordinance.
Our best fight still is with utilities for. For them to make a ruling that is not in public interest. And we are sharing in that cost with all the other counties.
That we are here that.
Yeah, and that, that's still our best trump card to get it stopped is to have the Utilities Board. Decide that it's not in the public good to have a CO2 pipeline.
But then they can, that lady can't somebody else get to it and it's out there coming for it? Well, there's our code of honor.
They're all appointed by the governor, correct?
Well, that's where contacting the governor would be.
You should have a bigger checkbook than Randstad or though.
Somebody's gonna have to take responsibility, some guy, their child, family. And this falls upon the governor's hands. There's evidence out there, they wound this up. It was set up, it wasn't safety people, so somebody is ultimately there. You have top legislators down there that, and you have the guts to come out of their office, you had another one on the most important day was our campaign. So, yeah, there is gonna be responsibility. I'm sorry for the people in the room, we're all friends, neighbors. I I don't think there's a spot up there, I don't think there's a spot out here. But you know, we are together, but let's just call it for what it is. That's what it is. Sad is being, it's kind of Midwest politics and it's controlled by a few. Or against the rest of it. Uh I don't know if you're elected official or you're just a higher E. That's what we're sharing now, so so going to the governor knowing all this. You know, really. Good luck, I guess.
Or a decision on it.
Yes, that would be the, uh my decision would be to accept the zoning.
And then do we need to include setting dates for public readings at that point or? So we need to have that in the agenda too.
That, that's part of the motion would be.
Yep, yep. So I think it needs to be.
We'll set the public readings and. You have the, correct the change.
Is that something we should have our attorney on the phone for, so it's laid out?
Let him know that we're proceeding.
If it passes.
Right, right, we're, we're moving on in the process is what I'm saying.
Doug, you got any comments?
I have one, uh definitions, if you look at the report. In appendix E. Uh page one sixty-seven, one seventy-seven.
What was the number again? One?
It's page one sixty-seven, E one sixty-seven. In the definition of facility. Is recommended in this type of group by the planning and zoning commission, but I would ask. In the definition of facility. And emergency shut-off valve.
Okay Doug, what? Which one did you read again?
Through the, uh, parts of time.
I just got.
Including all related substations. You include and emergency shut-off valves. Just as part of that definition.
So that and emergency shut-off valves was not part of the report from planning and zoning, that's your recommend. Okay, that's your recommendation.
I would ask that the board. Include that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that addition. You find it, Roger?
Yeah. That mean related substations to the. Like the pipeline, Doug, is that what you're intending?
It's just a definition up. So where's facility is used in the.
That was not from planning and zoning, that's what he recommended that. That was a comment that's highlighted, that's all.
There was a comment from navigator.
Well, that was their question. And then they added, well, I'm sure that. Yeah.
Did anybody got a problem with that?
Oh, no.
Jack, you good at that then?
Listen, there's, it's a, it's a huge document, there's.
Well, yeah, it takes a minute to flip to hundreds, some pages.
A hundred other things, it probably could be two weeks in, but I mean. Yeah, but it's a living document, it could be. Just at the same time.
To some degree, yes, but we should have it correct when we publish it.
You have any other question? Anybody else got any comments?
Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You said move forward with this ordinance, who are we responsible for?
Planning and zoning.
Right.
So if the pipeline opposed the, this goes to litigation, I'm only asking this question because I haven't seen the ordinance yet. So if I can get a copy of it, appreciate it.
Okay.
Is there anything in that ordinance that talks about eminent domain? Is it a possibility that you as a board could look at adding? Paragraphs to the zoning ordinance about eminent domain that we would not recognize it? And I only ask that because. Everybody asks me all the time, are you a constitutional chair? My response is if you're an elected official, you should be a constitutional official. And if this ever comes down to the road where a landowner is forced within a domain, I don't intend to. Uh, enforce that unless I'm ordered by a judge. Which means it has to go through the appeal process. So when I sit there as a sheriff and listen to this discussion. I, I completely understand what everybody's talking about. But I'm gonna defend the rights of the people as far as their life, liberty and property. And I think if we're gonna look at an ordinance, let's tell the state. That we won't recognize eminent domain in Casusa County, because we are sovereign county. There's ninety-nine of them here in Iowa. And I think that what each county needs to look at is take a stance as a sovereign county and at least make them sure that they understand that we won't recognize it. And then when it comes to the point where the pipeline is having to force that issue, of course, we'll see then that we recognize ourselves as a sovereign county. We've done it with the Second Amendment.
Yes.
As just a suggestion I'm gonna give as a share, because when this comes down to enforcement, that's my, my statement something.
May I just say something?
Yeah.
Eminent domain comes from property rights, it comes from. It's not in the constitution, but it's property rights, it comes from England. Our forefathers and eminent domain, they're. I mean, when we go out by road running, road department. When we go out by road running way, we start to process that domain, we don't have to get to it. We are eminent property, but there are times where. Eminent domain is needed. And we would get, we would. We would have very few road projects, there's unintended consequences with the state like that. And before, I, I think. I will turn to you and say that. There's gotta be a way. The eminent domain issues, I don't think that this particular issue. Is eminent domain per se, it's whether. This pipeline should be able to use eminent domain.
That's what I've got, Doug.
Well, but if you're gonna say, if you're gonna say you can't use eminent domain.
Well, this is your, this is your ordinance about a pipeline, right?
This is.
It's about hazardous liquid.
This is an ordinance about hazardous material. What's the difference you're talking about, Doug, is public use? And this is private. And for all the meetings I've been through with the pipeline, this is about the biggest, the first question I asked up on the code a year and a half ago. To the public board member, duty board member, was could you define how this is a public use and he couldn't answer. I don't know if any of you folks are right or, or did I ask that question? And he couldn't answer. So I wanna explain my, my statement I just made. I'm talking about eminent domain on hazardous materials for a pipeline. I'm not talking about public use where we're gonna have roadways and riverworks and bridges and that kind of stuff. I'm talking about hazardous materials.
There's. Oil, there's fuel, there's other pipelines that are in Casusa County. That would fall under the definition of hazardous material.
Didn't put it under private because the oil company comes.
I'm just saying there's unintended consequences with doing that and I would. I'm definitely requesting the board. Get some.
We're gonna, we're gonna do some.
I, I would, I would ask a question to the board if it would be worth exploring. The topic that our sheriff just brought up a week further instead of proceeding immediately. I would, I would be focused on eminent domain more than anything else in here. Like I said, I, I don't feel comfortable throwing a number on this, whether it's a hundred feet or a hundred mile. I don't feel that's, um, within my knowledge base. But eminent domain, I have said from the beginning, I'm not supportive of that for these projects. Um, like I said, Henry Stone's, um, comments and bill was to the effect of ninety percent. If we could leave something to that effect for Kasus County alone and have our, um. Authorize our sheriff to enforce that, I would be all for that, but maybe that's something we need to explore a little further.
Roger, would you consider writing that up as a, you know, some sort of an official letter to the supervisor so we can, you know, have a signed copy?
I would like to read the ordinance first and.
Sure, sure, yeah.
And, and I do think we need to consider the other consequences and that was part of my point about the language and the definitions. But if it can be limited to these specific projects by. Specific use. I, I don't know what our. Legal ability is in that category, but I would like to look at that further.
I'd say the judge just ruled in the case where engineers were trying to do a survey on a farm. And he would not let them in twice. He turned them away and the judge ruled in favor of the farmer because that was his private property. If so, Roger's got more of a point there than what we might think.
If we could throw away this entire report and have one paragraph that says we're not going to allow eminent domain in this county for these. Two projects, I would be supportive of that, but. I would like to look into that topic further.
And I fully and completely understand.
Creating the eminent domain can't fight that, our terms are.
Sometimes you can ask a question with a little bit different language in the question and get a different answer.
I, I don't think that's the question, Doug, the, the question is whether Roger has to enforce it in Kasus County.
Whether, whether our home rule would trump that.
Home rule would be older.
I think that question's already. We're talking about.
I, I wouldn't like that.
Yeah, let's, let's just, let's just put it on the agenda for next week to have that. Let's, uh, let's keep them both on, but the one, the conversation will, they'll move first.
Okay, I'll see you at least.
Okay.
That. The possible negative to that is you would be receiving information that you would not. Not very adequately be able to digest immediately and then the public would have the expectation. That you're making a decision on the other topic since it's on the agenda, so. My thought would be postpone that a week and see how the conversation goes and see what our options are.
Well, what do you guys think? This would be in closed session.
Yes, exactly, and.
And it almost ends up being conflicting agenda items, so.
Yeah, and, and it would be confusing for the public, I feel.
And confusing for mine too. Doing back to back, you know.
Well, then we can put them back to back and if you have a problem with it next week, then we will postpone it for a week. Let's put them on the agenda back to back and then see how you feel when we get to it and if we don't wanna address the issue, I'll accept a motion to.
Yep, yep. That's kind of my thought to having them both on there.
That's what I would recommend. See if you can find a time, we'll come in and make sure that we can come in.
Yeah, if he's available later this week, the sooner the better.
Yeah. Find a time that'll work, we'll all come in. But it'll be in closed session.
And I just wanna clarify my comment, there is a place for eminent domain in our law. And there's a due process for it. And as a sheriff, we've done condemnations on property, like what Doug's talking about. So I don't wanna be misunderstood that I'm against eminent domain. I'm against eminent domain that takes away the rights of a landlord that doesn't want it, but it's not public use. That make sense?
Yeah.
This is a private company with private profit. And the utility board member that I asked questions about was not able to answer to me, how is this public use? That's what eminent domain is, the government can do with public use.
And, and I would much rather take a stand on that with ourself or any other counties than throwing numbers at a wall. So that's, that's my position.
And I don't mean to disrupt the meeting, but I wanna see the ordinance and I still agree that I asked it, because if it comes down to enforcement, everybody's gonna look at me. So I wanna make sure it's clear that I, I do re-agree with the place for eminent domain, but not in this project.
And the reason I was asking for, you know, a signed letter by you is so that way if the question comes up, well, does your sheriff back it? Yes, he backs it a hundred percent, so.
But we'll let him see the ordinance first.
Yeah, 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 of course.
If Tammy can send me the ordinance so I can read it, I will give a response.
Maybe you ought to just grab one of these books.
That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Roger.
If I may, uh, I remember Roger. Meeting has been here and a half, lots changed in here, all alternatives. So this whole thing was sold on, it was gonna save Iowa State Farmers, well, there's alternative direction better. And so this idea that, uh, even more privately, it's for the shells. That's for us, the state communities gone, going away and they know that, so their crux of their arguments was that. And their alternatives, and actually for a lot of these ethanol plants, there are some they're installing in-house. You have a pipeline in-house producing a grain product of ethanol, they're gonna be more profitable. So it really, uh, really acts crux of their argument. As far as we have to do this, you don't, uh, a billion dollars, uh, behind, uh, they lost the. Something, the billion dollars of a budget. And so let's just see it for what it is, you know, they're counting up the board to go to, there's a whole county, they don't want them in there, period, and they're fighting. And they got some teeth, they wanna push it, uh, out of their county, so I, I think we're on the right track. I really do, and it's hard. Think if we could stay together. But a lot more strength and it's gonna be very hard to play with a county that wants to protect. Four to six hundred port ragers, there is a foul two and a half miles south of Algonquin.
But you also have to accept the fact that they've been, farmers have accepted millions and millions of dollars for right of ways already.
But it's a fault, and I think.
No, it's, it's, it's over fifty percent of the total project.
But it shouldn't be way over, I mean, if the idea that saying it's gonna stay or, and how many people come in here fighting tooth and nail this thing? We're not seeing. And so, um, I think if you were to ask somebody like Brian Jordy, you would say that, that ain't nothing. Fifty percent, you know, it shouldn't be seventy, eighty, whatever, I mean, that's why they wanted ninety percent, well, geez, ninety percent can't wait in this thing. Yeah, the county state house. Farm Bureau says fifty percent to me. It is not very much.
Forty-three percent, so I'd like to see proof it's over fifty percent, because when you talk to farmers, it's not fifty percent.
Are you saying forty-three for Kasus County or for the day or the whole project, which, which?
That's probably pretty. That's probably pretty accurate, I'm, but there's been a lot of money accepted already, they've seen, they sent out a lot of.
And, and we could, I mean, it's been said already, we could beat this horse to death and we could talk the pros and cons till. Next Tuesday if we wanted to stay here that long, but. We do have other things to.
We got stuff set on the agenda to. Work on, so I think. I don't think there's any more we can do.
Nope.
Today anyways.
We're gonna go to, uh, Roadwide, you ready for Road?
Yeah, we'll have stuff on the agenda.
There's just no action today, it was not.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do it.
Yeah. Take a break till nine thirty.
Hi Brian, Charlie, how you doing? Good, you? Understand you're gonna be on the memorabilia committee for Laverne. Well, it's okay, so I'll tell you how that happens. Uh, I got a call, Star Blackwood out there. Yeah. And he says, hey, you're on the committee with me, uh, the school community, and then I ran into her at the gas station. Bar, what committee am I on? And, and she says, well, the memorabilia stuff at the school, what to do with that? On that committee. Well, there's a Carter on the committee and I don't know any other Carter's in the word. And she says, so we're gonna meet next Tuesday evening or Wednesday, what works for you? Well, I guess.
You got volatile.
I got volatile, and I said, well, that'd be nice if John would. If he'd put me in committee, committee, tell me he's gonna put me on a committee. And I asked Johnny, I thought I told you about that, I go back for that. That's funny. So, so yes, I am, yeah.
Yeah, well, cause they, they were talking, you know, a lot of the schools still have their memorabilia, but they still have their buildings.
Correct, it's like, well, if we're gonna tear down the original, eh? Which is undecided yet, so we got a lot of details to figure out. How that whole process is gonna work and visiting with the Algonquin. School Board and Laverne School Board and, and, uh, our city council, our American Council, so I'm pretty involved, yeah. So, so it's, I don't.
Mr. Roger. Basically, for the guys who handed you Forbes back to us.
Have a good one.
They just don't want to run, be a rundown empty building for every creature to run through.
I, I know, and so it's, and that's just, how, how feasible, of course, every community would like to keep their school. All to keep their jam, and like, and we were just seeing how feasible is it, and if it's not, it's not, if it is, it is.
Well, they sure don't be lying, you know, parts of those, you know, they, they can do about anything.
Yeah, and granted, Algonquin is in a little different position, they have a lot more money, they have a lot more organizations than.
Well, it was a private owner that bought the.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, that's an investment there. And being it's on me.
The only, the only stipulation was that they kept the auditorium for public use.
Which I think a lot of that use has kind of gone away too. So.
Yeah.
A lot of, it's a lot of that is now like, you know, the dance recitals, you know, stuff like that. But they, they do have like practices.
They do, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, now they got.
That which.
Understandably so.
Why we built.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'll see you.
Have a good day, Brian.
Um, Boone Valley.
Watershed.
Watershed.
Okay.
Uh, you guys, have you guys even had meetings or anything like that for that? Okay, um, because one of the things that got brought up in the hazard mitigation planning process was, yeah, any type of watershed stuff.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I talked with a guy, I can't remember her name right now, but she was hoping to get some information on who to talk to about that and.
Yep.
Because there's some things that may be in like plans in there that they can utilize in the hazard mitigation plan.
That committee and this committee. I mean, I, I have no idea.
Okay.
So I, they had a meeting at the beginning of the year. I was never informed of it. They also had a meeting at the beginning of the year. I was also never informed of it and I sent emails, never heard anything by her. So I'm hoping that I get included on the next one.
Who did you take that on from? Was that?
They were both on Gaels.
Okay.
They have a committee, so I just kind of adopted them too, but.
Yeah.
And then Care Connection was.
Maybe you reach out to Gaels and see if he has a contact for that, that.
I think I've contacted it now and I'm hoping I get included in the next one.
Sure.
So I think, I think we should be okay, but they just assumed that Cassous County didn't send a delegate anything else. So, whatever.
Yeah, cause there's just, I, I talked to her and she said that she'd wanted some information that, uh, you know, possibly be included in the Cassous County having a very shared plan stuff, so.
Yo. No, I'd like to go to the Boone River meetings, uh, when they have them, cause it's in Clarion, so it's pretty, pretty close to them.
Yeah.
And I'm in the watershed, so I mean, it means something.
Yeah.
Good conversation.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
How's Doug today?
Well, I'm fine. I'm all right, guys.
Doing all right.
Good.
Got the exciting portion of the day done.
Carter, how'd your name get on all this decision making?
Decision making?
Yeah, on the planning and zoning amendment for purposes regarding restricting the usage. It's a person to contact. It's Carter next.
Right, cause he's put it on the agenda for the agenda request.
Oh, so it's, I guess we're, we don't have to worry about it. Except to Carter.
Yeah, Carter's got it wrong.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, Carter, what do you think we should do, Carter?
I gotta go. I got an appointment.
Sick next week.
I might be sick next.
I was trying to think of something and gosh, now I can let Carter make the decision.
Can you ride your bike?
Yeah.
Can you go by?
Well, maybe, yeah, I saw you. They've called me up once. We're all moving something, so I rode my bike over to his place and then rode back home.
Okay.
Jack, we think we have.
It, that, that request number is twenty-two where they need a load of dirt.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Twenty-two.
That explains why we didn't know what we were supposed to do with them because we're like.
We, we, it's lateral sixty-six, the drain ninety ordinance. That's the one she didn't.
Is that the other ones for?
Well, that explains why we were like, oh, what do we do with this?
For Dan Bacon?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in German township.
Oh, okay. Ninety goes that far?
Yeah.
That's the sign Kyle. Is that northbound or southbound traffic?
It was on the north side of the blacktop, so it would have been southbound traffic coming up to the blacktop there.
See Anton, he knocked the sign down again on the dirt road.
Pardon me?
Anton, every year he knocks the sign down on the dirt road. We should bill him for it.
Yeah, you gotta set up a trail to him, yeah.
Yeah, ah, well, he's the one that goes down. For this, he doesn't manage to have to fold his bean head. He leaves it on. It's thirty foot heads down a dirt road.
It might not take him.
You see him do it.
Well, if he slid over a little more, he might.
True, who's turned a little green?
No.
Oh.
And that'll do it.
All right, recording still on. We are back into session. And uh, construction in the right of way. We have one, Doug.
Yes, Midland Power Company has requested to uh, and it's actually two separate locations. Uh, down in Garfield Township, they're rebuilding along Fiftieth Avenue and Sixtieth Avenue, south of One Tenth Street. And then it'll go to the South County line. They're gonna be rebuilding overhead, uh, overhead facilities there. I'm glad you have a word of proof of this.
Do I have a motion to approve construction right away?
Uh huh.
Carter?
Second.
Second by Josh. Any discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That is all the requests for construction of the road right away. Discussion, requirements are to be pouring tomorrow. There's a plan for that bridge deck up in Lincoln Township, the Algonquin Airport. Uh, the project was awarded by the city. I think they're waiting for some uh, federal uh, concurrence with that, but that project is moving forward. And then we have an Iowa DOT project on Highway uh, fifteen right south of Benton. That is to schedule the start anytime. They will be using our uh, E thirty and E fourteen, I think is what it is. Uh, for an official detour and we'll make sure that we also watch for our loads there. Um, got open positions at the mechanic shop, which we're scheduling some interviews for. And we just uh, received a resignation out of the lead yard shop this morning. So I uh, will be advertising for that. And we do have some equipment down, loader at the transfer station went down. We have a secondary road loader uh, there taking place at that. Uh, we have semi tractor that uh, the, something to do with emissions, particulate filter was plugged. Why? We don't know. It seemed to be regenerating and everything, but it's being repaired. And then uh, I don't know, has anyone talked with the fair board? There was, we had uh, three motor graders. We traded in one with the idea that we were gonna keep, the road department was gonna keep one with the spare and the fair board was going to purchase another one. Has anyone talked to any financial? I guess, is the fair board going to be purchasing that? Is that the understanding?
When, when was that the plan?
When we purchased the three.
Well, that.
We only traded in one.
That was a long. Yeah, a long time ago, the fair board said they wanted, wanted to buy a motor grader. Or the county would donate a motor grader and that's, I don't think that there was.
County is supposed to donate it. I would rather not have the secondary road department donate.
Right.
So I don't know if the, if the county is supposed to be donating it, who is supposed to be, who's supposed to be helping save the road department is my question.
Correct. That, that nobody's ever made any, there was never any discussion on any of that.
Uh, yeah, I guess that's the first time here now too.
So. Yeah, the only times they've ever been in here was talking about the, the grandstands and, and.
They come in and they ask about the, the motor grade.
Okay, it hasn't been.
That's why we had that in the plan. I don't know. We've received one of the three motor graders. I do not know where the next two are coming in.
Can I ask you, what was the allowable trade on that motor grader?
I think it was seventy thousand.
Do you remember when that was approved to do the purchase of those three?
I don't remember exactly, but I can certainly.
If you could, if you could find that, I would appreciate that.
It's been quite a while.
Yeah, I mean, I remember it. I don't remember exactly when.
The two getting traded in are the Hs that are left? Hs or Gs?
I, I'm not sure. I think one was an H. I thought one was a G and the one, uh, I, I can't remember. I gotta look at my inventory.
Okay, you don't know if the seventy thousand is for a G or an H?
I'll, I'll get that, Roger.
Okay.
I think, I would get those specifics.
I, I sure keep the age. I wouldn't let that go. They were just too good a motor grader.
So.
Do you know how many hours they're on?
It's over ten thousand.
Yeah.
Hours. Uh, four ten hour working days. Our foreman, shop foreman, road foreman have all talked about that. We think that that uh, our roads are in good enough shape. Um, what I was thinking was starting in Monday. I don't know if the board has any concerns with that at all.
I think Hancock, yeah, Hancock County started May first.
What did the hours look like for that then?
Don't we typically start that up on Memorial Day?
It's not really.
Well, I mean, like, start.
It, it says we will load by the end and there's some understanding that overtime is after ten hours instead of after eight hours. The men typically work, the operators, the road department typically work seven thirty to four o'clock with thirty minute lunch.
Okay.
When we go for ten hour days, they go from six thirty to five with a half hour.
Okay.
I have no issue with it at all. I think they get more done in ten hour days.
Okay, well, we will, I'm planning to start them next Monday.
Okay.
And other than that, I don't really have anything. Discussion.
Do you hear anything back on the truck that you took to get fixed?
We had a truck over there that had, it was, it was kind of a lot of codes and they, I don't know what they did exactly, but we have a back. But on the way over, we brought a semi, semi tractor with the.
Regenerator?
With the old box, uh, that exhaust box and the particulate filter. And they ran some of the diagnostic and checked some things, but it actually, it was uh, the same truck was just repaired for the same problem about, I, I don't know, near future meaning the last year, year and a half.
I got nothing else. Um, was Tyler gonna be here for that?
That's not Bolton and make, that's McFlure.
Is it?
Yes.
Anything else for Doug? Yep.
Or uh, as far as that review, is that gonna happen at a certain time or are we just gonna notify us? Okay.
So I, as soon as she.
I would. I would say a couple of minutes.
Thanks, Doug. You bet.
Yeah, shouldn't, shouldn't be.
I sent Roger a link to that report to Roger.
Okay.
Yeah, so this train for lot of love and project is McFlure Engineering out of Fort Dodge.
Yeah, okay. And they're not gonna be here for that?
No.
No.
Bancroft up to six city here.
No, it is, uh, it is a lateral ditch off of drain four. It does start right north of Bancroft, but it's only about three miles, two, whatever. It, it kind of goes north.
It's a short ditch that goes kind of northeast.
West of Bancroft.
It branches off just before the main open ditch gets to the lagoon area. So it's just on the east side of that about half mile.
If you, uh, it crosses the blacktop that Tom Anton blacktop.
Oh, yeah. If you, if you pull up your map, you'll be able to see there's red.
I know where, I know where Tom's at. So it'll sound like for that one.
Hmm, yeah, it, it's a short ditch.
Okay, if you go up to Bancroft, you'll see the points all on the main open ditch of four and then.
Yeah.
There's another one that goes about two, a little over two miles north, kind of weaves east and west a little bit. But you'll see those points.
At one time they had an issue. Somebody said their thirty-six inch tile that was dumping in it. So they were on the board when we knew that statement. Thank you, Doug.
No, they were not.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
They didn't find it.
I, I was out there.
Didn't find thirty-six inch.
There's not a thirty-six inch tile there.
Marge lost it.
Are we in drain four or ram?
Yeah.
We just haven't known that.
Goes by Goche's.
Goes by J. Goche. Just southeast of J. Goche's inside, yep.
What was being done there again?
There was a clean out project.
Clean out, clean out the ditch and.
The head wall needed somewhere.
Yeah, so there's, like, there's stuff in the completion report. We just acknowledged that for today and then we set time and date for the public hearing and that's when the, that's when we have the hearing and owners can.
Okay.
Bring in any concerns, all that, but we're just basically setting time and date today.
Gotcha.
March.
Day thirtieth, it's lit.
Yep, and Dan had, Dan had called me about that. So, anyone?
Can I call?
Yeah.
Don't get nervous. I want to write it down so I can remember it.
I would make a motion to acknowledge. I would make a motion to acknowledge the completion report and set the time and date for May thirtieth at ten AM.
I'll second your motion. And ask for any discussion on the motion. Did that time work, Tammy?
Yeah.
That is for DD four eleven.
Following an open dead ship.
And we did all this before you two were on the board, so you're kinda in the.
There was, there's a very.
Picture right now.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a very small amount of finish work like this spring, but most of it was done last year.
Okay.
Rights was listed?
Right.
And that was before or after?
Well, it's kind of a two step.
That would be after, cause it's plugged out there.
It ended up to be a two-step thing. We cleaned a little bit out earlier because one of the outlets was flugged with mud. So I had Ritzel go out and clean out from the head walls south ways so that they get some free board on their outlet. It was blown out to time. Now, because it was forcing. Forced outlet.
Yeah.
So it was one of them that, then we decided to clean the ditch so, cause we made a puddle.
Yeah, it, it got bigger than it.
Yeah.
It's what happens once in a while. Any questions on the report? If not, all those in favor of the motion on May thirty at ten o'clock for completion hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous. We are up to drainage repairs, Mark? You have them in our folder, all of them?
Wanna start this time or you want me to?
You get the rest of them?
I got the rest of them.
Well, I'll start.
Tails a big winner today.
Yeah, I got a request on, uh, Drainage District, District one sixty-one. It's number twenty-seven, uh, intake. Lag, broken tile, large washout, needs repair, depth smear. And it is in Union Township, fourteen inch tile.
I got request number twenty-five, Lead Yard, Section Three, uh, for Robbie Galehouse. Ritzel's already fixed that. Number twenty-six, Evarin, Section twenty-one, two spots, broken tile. Looks like a bigger sized tile for Dan Binkin. And then twenty-eight is Grant, Section twelve, outlet pipe washed out, needs repaired for Scott Farrell. Well, that's my three.
Did they, did they tell you if it was planted?
And that one that you had, was it last week or the week before that said it had a hole big enough to fit a car in?
Yeah.
Was it?
I haven't heard, I.
Okay, I didn't know you hadn't looked at that one.
I, no, not yet. I stopped at Rachel's. They were gonna go up there.
Take care of the request, Roger.
I have a motion for the supervisors to take care of their request.
I'll second.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous.
Anybody come to Todd, they coming up?
I email everybody, but if you wanna post that, you can.
Let us see.
Um, Mark, anything else on drainage?
We are up to you. Yep. Perfect, thanks.
Big tweet, Norman Beard ever get to the, up and watch the township for, for Belenaces?
He was, he's working on the ones that were, um, being planted and that was CRP, so he's hoping to get to it next week.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, it's backed up into the field on both sides.
We can't plant it because we have.
You guys farm that? Oh, okay.
Road department's been a whole haul over there during, during. Children's as well, so.
Okay, from road department.
Yeah. You should have straight.
Dave, you don't, you don't think farmers wanna get in and plant their fields anytime, do you?
You're done except for that? We're done except for.
Don't. Don't understand. I had in our house last night.
I feel really bad. Are you gonna have?
Base stop?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna build it. He's quite the.
That they said just so everything.
And then the final, you know, not being a threat, it's just that. You need help with, with.
We'll have you up again someday.
Yeah.
I'll run down to ground.
Is it, Nick, is that gonna be like a party, like a squash raising party, kinda like a farm raising?
Well, you know, if you rebirth a squash, you should have some kind of a celebration.
I know.
Yeah.
Let us know when it's scheduled.
Okay. I'll do that.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll, and I'll, and I'll dig this out.
I told her you would bring out the original.
You, you have something I can sign? He's already.
You already signed it.
We did.
Oh, we did it?
Yeah, we just sent her the wrong thing. We sent, we sent her the sheet for the ordinance instead of this.
Oh, for putting it in of, yeah, okay.
She can't, she ain't prove any money about it, but I have a respectful statement.
That is a problem.
That's a problem.
Yes. Carter, you've got broad shoulders. We're leaving it all up to you now.
Oh, okay.
Being that your name was on there, I, I feel a lot better that I.
Feeling better today.
Yeah, I feel better. I can shove this downhill.
Uh, my name's on the, on the request. Or on the. Yeah. My book, thank. Who's saying you don't have to worry about it?
I, I did, I cleared my conscience. Cause I was really getting worried about it.
If y'all move a half mile south, I'll be in humble kind of that way.
Thanks for, after.
Yeah.
And Judy had a, another meeting, but she'll come when she's finished with that.
You try calling, Roger.
In a few weeks, if it's sent in this four zero one.
Hey, uh, we are going through the, that review of the public records request and open meeting laws. All right. Yep. On his way.
I mean, you didn't need him ten o'clock yet.
No, just across the street.
I bet he'll get here.
Ten?
We're not, we're not, no, there was no time. Correct.
While he's on his way, I think I might do. I spent your water.
You want March to come into this?
I think it's.
Me usually an I four or a four. So. I have the request to go to her, um, but I've already got it. If public.
I got this. But I wasn't trying to say anything. You looked at me all year. Nope, nope. I, I was just trying to work my phone up. That I hope this goes away soon. You can start rolling a marathon down. Oh, yeah, yeah. Marathon's on it. I don't, I'm not into that. You put two on pass?
Um, I requested to be on the agenda to kinda go through the sunshine laws, which are chapter twenty-one or located in chapter twenty-one and chapter twenty-two of the Iowa code. And they apply to the board of supervisors and basically all the elected officials and department heads, uh, to kind of, um, provide information to everyone as to how those laws apply to us and what we can do to avoid complaints that are filed with the Iowa Public Information Board. Uh, it came to my attention that this might be something that we should do, uh, because we have had a series of complaints uh, that have been filed and, um, have been addressed. Uh, so I thought it might be advisable for you guys to know what exactly we have to do. Now, this PowerPoint presentation, as you can see, was prepared by the Iowa Public Information Board. I went through it, uh, it's very good, very detailed. Uh, I couldn't have done anything better, but I graded myself. Uh, so to not reinvent the wheel, I decided to use their PowerPoint. Uh, I've added some notes, uh, to it to, to remind me to, uh, discuss certain things that apply that may not be uh, as detailed in the slides. If you have any questions, ask them. Uh, we'll go through it, um, so that we can provide as much education, as much information as possible. I truly believe that, you know, when we're looking at what we do as a public body or as, uh, public officials, uh, the goal is to make sure that, uh, uh, everything is open uh, to the extent that it's handy. And I truly believe that each and every person in this room and who's in the courthouse or processing the law enforcement, um, center is, uh, committed to do that. Uh, sometimes things can be perceived differently than what they actually are. And as I get through this, uh, PowerPoint, there's a portion in there, um, regarding best case practice or best situation practices to avoid any potential misunderstandings by the public. Start off with a few quotes. Whenever the people are well informed, they can be trusted with their own government. Thomas Jefferson. Uh, that's true. Uh, what we do is for the public. The public has rights to the information and to, um, uh, understand, view, see what we do and why we do it. Uh, most of us are elected and so we are obligated to make sure that the people who we serve who have put us in the positions that we are, um, know what we're doing. Uh, and if they don't like what we're doing, there's a process to, um, not vote us in at the next election. The liberties of people never were nor ever will be secured when the transactions of their rulers may be concealed from them. Uh, that was by Patrick Henry. Popular government without popular information or the means of acquiring it is put, um, is but a prologue to a force or a tragedy or perhaps both. James Madison. This is an overriding presumption. You'll see in both, um, the chapter twenty-one, the open meetings laws and chapter twenty-two, the open records laws. Uh, if there is contained in those provisions or interpretations that we put on those provisions of those two chapters, uh, any ambiguity has to be resolved in the favor of openness. So when in doubt, it's open. Okay, and probably more important, the discussions by the board of supervisors, uh, you know, to make sure that what they do and how they decide on what they do uh, and the discussions that generate that decision are held in, in an open forum. Just a little history, uh, I won't, uh, touch on this too long, but, uh, the chapter twenty-one, chapter twenty-two, the sunshine law, the sunshine meeting to, uh, bring openness, uh, and sunshine, um, transparency, uh, to government. Uh, were first enacted in Jul- on July first nineteen sixty-seven, so they've been around a long time. They've been tweaked, uh, over and over, uh, since nineteen seventy. The Iowa Public Information Board came into existence on July first two thousand thirteen, which provides an alternate means for people out there who feel that they have, uh, been, uh, denied access to the, you know, open meetings or open records. Uh, gives them an efficient and cost-effective and infallible process to resolve those complaint. There is still a legal action that they can pursue in the judiciary, the judiciary, but that obviously, um, can be, can be expensive. And so the legislature, uh, created this board, uh, to, uh, provide, um, a cost-effective and efficient way to handle any, any issues or complaints. So this is broken up into two sections. First section's chapter twenty-one, which is the open meetings, uh, law. Uh, it says open meetings one oh one, kind of the designation of, you know, preliminary and, and basic information. Uh, but this deals with, um, meetings, uh, and the openness of those meetings by a public body. Um, as you can see, there's, uh, definitions, a laundry list of definitions, uh, that, um, would be classified as government bodies, boards, councils, commissions, uh, created by law or appointed by, uh, by other governing bodies such as city councils, county boards, supervisors, school boards, et cetera. Um, bodies created by the board of regents or president of university charged with management or control of athletic programs, advisory boards, advisory commissions and task force, nonprofit corporations who are supported by property tax revenue and licensed to conduct paramutual betting, nonprofit corporations licensed to conduct gambling games, governing bodies of drainage or levy districts, advisory boards, advisory commissions or advisory committees, task force, et cetera, uh, created through twenty AP or by executive order of a state or subdivision, advisory boards of general assembly and governor, uh, by executive order. Primarily, as you can see, the highlight one, uh, is what we're gonna focus on to do with, today with the board of supervisors. They are a government body. But as I go on further, uh, other types of, uh, ad hoc committees and committees that are formed by the board, board of supervisors, because as far as the, the issue regarding that, um, if you look at the second one from the bottom, advisory boards, advisory commissions, et cetera, uh, created by executive order. In county government, the executive order comes from the board of supervisors. So if it's created by the board of supervisors, more than likely, it's gonna be subject to open meetings. We'll get into more detail on that in a second. Does the definition apply to all task force subcommittees, et cetera? Yes. Uh, if membership, first of all, if a majority of the board of supervisors are on that commission, it's open. Okay, it does apply. Uh, but when you look at the advisory bodies, uh, those created by the county board of supervisors, um, you really need to look at what their course of action is. Okay, do they have the power to develop and make recommendations to the board of supervisors? If they do, they're subject to chapter twenty-one. Um, in general, uh, getting back to that first premise, uh, when in doubt, make it open. Um, you know, the recommendation, uh, that the, um, Iowa Public Information Board says is while even though some may not be required to be open, uh, it's often encouraged to do so as a matter of public policy. Again, trying to make everything. Again, trying to make everything as transparent as possible so that there are, um, no questions out there as to why things are being, uh, decided, uh, in the way that they ought. Uh, allow the public to have access to that, and that is a best practice that's recommended by the Iowa Public Information Board. What is a meeting? The important thing to look at here is when you look at a majority of the board of supervisors, okay, a forum uh, of the board of supervisors, whether it's electronic, formal or informal, that deliberation or action is taking place. Okay, so there has to be a majority of the board of supervisors. It can be in any way, shape or form that we have available, electronic means, formal or informal, um, in person, whatever. Um, but liberation and action or action has to be taken place. Uh, it eliminates from that the, um, social gatherings, our county picnic, obviously, we hope that all of the supervisors attend the county picnic, that's fine. That is not a meeting. It does not have to, uh, be, uh, preceded by a notice and an agenda. Uh, social gatherings are accepted from them, okay? There are other things that come up that are, are maybe a little bit more, uh, technical in nature. It actually provides in the code, code, social gatherings or, or ministerial types of actions. Uh, ministerial types of actions means, uh, something that is not capable of uh, discussion, decision, judgment or discretion. Uh, like for instance, uh, if there's an order by this board saying, okay, we're going to, uh, sign this document. Okay, and that document's prepared, and then the next meeting, you have the document in front of you. By signing that document, since it's already been approved by the board in open meetings or in an open meeting, uh, that would be considered in the miss- administrative act. Okay, there's no decision that anyone can make, no discretion, it's already been made, it's done. Um, now there's some Supreme Court cases that, that have, uh, looked at other types of things. Now, you guys may, as the board of supervisors go to, uh, a meeting with someone who is advising you on details relating to something you're going to make a decision on. So in those types of situations, that would be also considered ministerial. If all you're doing is receiving information. Okay, so in those, uh, I mean, you know, it could be, say, for instance, an engineer, okay? And the engineer is providing you, I guess, not a county engineer necessarily.
How about a drainage district?
Drainage district.
Drainage and meeting where you're just attending it.
Attending to receive information, okay? Very good, thank you for that, uh, I was trying desperately to come up with an example, uh, and thanks Doug for doing that. In that situation, if all you're doing is receiving information, it doesn't have to, it's not classified as an open meeting.
What about if we go out on a drainage district facility and look at a project that's been done by an engineering firm? And we go out to determine whether the project is completed or not completed as a board, does it need to be on the agenda?
Yes, because of the fact that you're determining whether it was completed or not completed.
So then it needs to be on agenda.
Here's the issue, if, and this is where the, the details and why it would be best in any of those situations to put it on the agenda and publish notice, okay? Because a meeting, and this happened, uh, in a Supreme Court case, a meeting can transform into a ministerial type of meeting and then into a meeting that should, should be, uh, under the open meetings or is required to be to have the, the notice and the agenda published. So if you're asking questions, if you're, okay, well, what happens if this is, um, you know, this is the scenario? And if you're starting to discuss that and, and, uh, getting more than just information from the individual, then it turns into an open meeting. And if you haven't published notice and you haven't given an agenda, that's a problem. Or could be a problem. Again, as a lawyer, a lot of this depends, okay? But what I'm saying is it's always best to give notice and post an agenda just so that you are covered in case that meeting goes into, uh, a, a meeting that would be subject to the open meetings.
So do you have to publish the time and place where you start?
Yeah, so we'll get into what needs to be, uh, preceded, what precedes the, the, the actual meeting itself here in a second.
Okay.
But that's, you know, that's a good example. So might as well do it, that way you're covered, and if anyone wants to show up and participate, they certainly can. You know, it's, uh, it's better to be safe than sorry. It's better to be open than run into a situation where it could be considered a closed meeting. The purpose of the law is to allow citizens to see how their officials arrive at a decision, okay? Um, they want to see, and I think generally the people who come and are interested in the topics that you discuss, uh, they want to, they want to see and hear your opinions. They want to see how the decisions are made and what the discussions entail. Uh, even retreats are public meetings of a quorum whose present policy is discussed. So I don't know that you guys go on retreats, I mean, I imagine some board of supervisors, uh, some supervisors do, some boards do, but, uh, but that's the point. Uh, it can transform into, uh, something that would require, uh, to be had noticed or an agenda posted, and an agenda posted. Emails. Get into, I think most of you, uh, know about the rolling forum, okay? Uh, of course, every situation, as it states, it's, it's fact specific. Uh, it's easy to send the informational emails out, I'm sure you guys do, and that's fine. That's not in danger of any way being considered a rolling quorum uh, or a walking quorum, as they, they actually, uh, discuss it in this PowerPoint. Um, as long as you're sharing relevant information, uh, and you're not intending to avoid the open meetings law. Uh, if members want to share an opinion or debate policy, it should be in this room, not on an email, okay? Should save them for open discussion. Your best practice is save all discussion regarding anything that you're going to be deciding, uh, to be, uh, uh, done and held in an open meeting. Electronic communication concerning public business, business is a public record. So when we get into the open records law, realize that that is a public record, uh, subject to, uh, requests and, uh, uh, the ability for anyone in the public to gain access to that record.
Can I interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, now we're stomach, carpet, solutions pipeline. Top subject. When somebody in the public asks us our opinion, are we able to share it or should we keep it for the board?
You can share it. Again, open meetings require what?
People.
A majority of the board of supervisors. And then one of the things we talked about not too long ago was, well, if I'm out in the public and someone comes up and says, what's your opinion on this? Can I give it to them? Absolutely.
Okay.
And you should, they should know that. But the three of you or more getting together and sharing each other's opinion, now you're in violation of the open meetings law unless it was, unless it was preceded by notice and an agenda.
Cause there's people that have an issue with us sharing opinions once in a while.
Well, I don't know why, I mean, that, that's not part of the open meetings, uh, law, it has to be a majority of the board of supervisors.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, and, and to even go further, if, say, for instance, I'm interested in something, you're deciding, I ask you for your opinion. I ask, uh, Kyle for his opinion, and I ask Joshua for his opinion, now there's three. Did you violate the open meetings law?
No.
Absolutely not, because you didn't do it among yourselves. You shared it with me. So, you know, I think that that's important for you to do that because your constituents want to know what you're thinking. Okay, speculatively on a hot topic like that. And on any topic, to be, to be honest with you. Here's another one that's come up in the past, do members of the public have the right to speak in an open meeting? No, they do not, unless they're on the agenda, okay? We have an open time in the beginning, I don't know how that goes, I'm rarely here during that time. But, you know, I think you open it up for anybody to come in and comment to the board, uh, as a group, their, their positions on certain things. That is them sharing it with you, um, and so, you know, you can live at that if necessary, if it becomes, uh, disorderly or disruptive, uh, because they do not have a right to speak at, um, any men, any meeting that they're not on the agenda. If they're on the agenda, then they obviously have the right to present that.
Today at the meeting for summit, there was, this room was full and some people shared their so, their opinions and they did it very respectfully. I don't find anything wrong with that.
No, not at all. Uh, you, you shouldn't really. My advice would be let them, let them, you know, as long as they're capable of presenting it in a civil way. All right, you do not have to be subjected to abuse or disruptive type of, of, of actions. Um, and you can cut that down, you know, you can say enough's enough, if you're going to present something, make it simple, okay? Uh, because this is a public forum where civility is important. Much the same as in the court. Uh, I've seen that where a judge comes down hard on an individual who was being disrespectful or making, uh, uh, rude comments. So, uh, you're in control of that. This is your meeting, it's, it's, it's something that you have the ability to control. Um, okay, so here's the, uh, the requirements for the open meetings. If you have three or more, a quorum, and you're going to be discussing, um, uh, items that are going to be decisions that you make, uh, or you're, uh, uh, you know, doing any type of discussion or decision that is required to be done in, in an open forum. It needs to be preceded by a public notice of at least twenty four hours, given the day, time, place and a tentative agenda, okay? Uh, twenty four hours notice is the guidepost. However, that being said, we'll get into a dozen, sit, it doesn't mean that you can't address something not on the agenda if it's considered an emergency type of situation, okay? But that is very narrowly construed, okay? So, um, the notice that you have must be sent to any news organization requesting it. I don't believe that there's any problem there. Uh, I believe we send it out, uh, it's on Thursday or Friday. You oftentimes, you know, there may be a change between Friday and Monday, that's, that's just understood. Any type of, uh, agenda that, uh, uh, is put out in advance is subject to change, uh, to fit within that twenty four hour, uh, date and time notice requirement. Uh, must be posted in a prominent place, where's ours posted?
Todd, Doug had a question, but ours is, ours is placed on bulletin board.
On bulletin board.
Yeah.
Sent to any your news organization requesting it. Um, I mean, in zoning commission, we've had a couple of meetings. I compared the agenda for that. I know Tammy forwards it to, or Tammy has requests from the news organizations. Planning and zoning them because they're under the board of supervisors, they fall under this, is that a request from them for that?
Well, a request for a notice from the planning and zoning.
So it would have to be directly to you?
Yeah, you're separate from, right. But generally speaking, if Tammy has a request from the news media, I assume we do it by email.
Okay.
So the simplicity there is just, you know.
I get eaten.
No, but this.
What kind come up with the radio and, okay, put it anywhere you go.
Well, let's go back to his planning and zoning commission. If three or more supervisors show up at the planning and zoning commission, what's the right procedure for us?
Show up.
Just show up.
It's, yeah, there are, it's not just the majority, it's what is happening with the majority of supervisors at that meeting.
So it's, yeah. Yeah, or they're getting information and not actually discussing and making a decision at that point, but it doesn't need to be an agenda.
Precise, that's precisely it. With one caveat. If it has the possibility of, you know, going into that, I mean, you know, you're each, uh, represented district and, um, you're going to have differing views on whatever may be discussed at the planning and zoning. Uh, if you go there and you think, you know, I really want to find out, you know, how this applies to whatever they're, they're dealing with in your district, you're going to probably be asking questions. And you're probably going to be sharing possibly opinions that you have regarding that piece of property in your, or area in your district, for instance. If that's something, the best thing would be to, you know, say, I want to put it on the agenda because I want to, uh, uh, potentially go into things that may be discussions or maybe decisions, or may in fact my, uh, may, may, uh, affect my judgment on that matter.
So that, would that require a separate agenda?
Well.
Published, so.
No, you can put it, oftentimes it's on the bottom of the agenda for the week.
Yeah.
You know, it's subject to change, obviously, but.
Well, I mean, like, if, if we've got three supervisors showing up to a planning zoning meeting and we end up.
No, it's on the same agenda.
On the same agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
That provides the notice, if you're wanting to discuss something with that, then you want to put that on underneath it. So in other words, if your, your purpose is to go there and discuss some issue or some, uh, set of circumstances that would, uh, you know, that, that would impact what you decide or, you know, what your judgment would be on a particular issue, you'd want to list that as an agenda item.
If we wanted to discuss setbacks that they are discussing, we would have to, depending on the agenda item, we will discuss that next.
I would recommend that, because that way, that way people know what's going to happen.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, but, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're clear.
But, but then again.
It's going to be on the agenda for the planning and zoning.
Yeah, you know, you have the agenda there, but you need to cover your.
Right.
Your forum or your board and body.
Okay.
Separate from theirs. But get back to the first one, does you being there give you the authority to speak to them and listen to them? I don't, do they?
General, I'll stop to the chair of the planning and zoning commission because I guess, I, I don't know, are they, the planning and zoning commission, when they say, we're just going to talk about this particular thing amongst the board, you're welcome to attend.
And they put something on your agenda?
That was going to be my question, if the planning and zoning commission is going to have discussions with board supervisors about something in an ordinance and the planning and zoning commission uh, agenda has that on, does Tammy need to create an agenda for the board of supervisors attending the planning?
Notice and an agenda, tentative agenda, yes.
Okay.
For that, for that.
That was kind of yours, and that's what they got from your answer.
Yeah, they don't, they don't cover both end of these, cause you're a separate, uh, kind of public, um, board, separate government board. Does that make sense?
Yep, yeah.
Again, what's the overriding principle? Openness, right? We want to make sure everybody knows, because, you know, the reality is the majority of the people in the public may not have interest in specific items, but there will definitely be people who are interested in specific items from different areas. And they should be apprised of what's going on. So if you're doing something that affects my real estate in, in, say, for instance, Bon Creek, um, you know, I may want to attend that, you know, I want to find out what's going on. Um, you know, I, I, uh, I think that's what we owe the public and not think, I know, that's what we owe the public, the ability for them to attend, uh, and see what you, uh, um, what your decisions are, what they're based on. Um, best practices again, suggested by the Iowa Public Information Board, email a copy to members of the public who request it. I think we do that, right? Um, and, uh, also place it on the website. I think we also do that, correct? Again, the posting of the, the twenty four hours preceding a meeting, uh, where it's more like, where the public knows and is more likely to be able to access it. Um, and if at all possible, which I don't think it is for here, since we posted in the courthouse, um, i- if it is all possible, uh, continuous access, um, would be, um, would be preferred. I think looking at from the standpoint of posting in a public spot for people who want to come in and look at it when the courthouse is open, and then we also put it on our website to, to kind of cover that if people are not able to come into the courthouse, uh, to access the actual posting. Uh, the agenda, what needs to be included, um, it can be bare bones. It obviously has to be reasonably sufficient to alert interested people, uh, as the subject matter that's going to be considered. Uh, there was, uh, a Supreme Court opinion that, uh, um, the board just simply had um, approval of old minutes, old business, new business, and that was it. That obviously is, is not sufficient. Um, so, you know, the end quotes there, that came from a, a, a Supreme Court case. Um, and, and clearly is not sufficient. You know, the, the details, again, would be a case by case situation, but I think most people can, can understand, uh, okay, what do I have to give? I think we discussed this a couple of years ago as to, say, for instance, drainage, uh, matters. You know, we should let them know where the property is as far as the drainage issue you're going to discuss. Um, you know, and, and that should be enough to reason. You know, and, and that should be enough to reasonably, um, advise people out there that may want to come or may be affected by the subject matter that you're going to consider. Emergency items, I mentioned before, if something comes up ahead of meeting, all right, uh, you know, there's something that, uh, comes up that's, that's time sensitive and there's absolutely no way to postpone that decision, uh, then it is possible for you to make a decision on that, discuss the topic and make a decision on it. So there are exceptions, however, I caution you because that's very, as I mentioned earlier, narrowly construed. Most situations you deal with could be postponed, at least for enough to give 24 hours notice. May require you guys to come in on a Wednesday or a Thursday or whatever. We've done that. Just on very few occasions over the course of the time that I've been here, um, but generally speaking, most things can be tabled uh, and put on the next, uh, meeting's agenda. Um, and as the bottom of the agenda must specifically state any issues the board intends to discuss in an open or closed session. The minutes. Uh, our minutes at a minimum should have the date, time, and place of the meeting, the members present, the action taken at any meeting. Um, votes by each member must be noted individually, unless it's a unanimous vote and everybody votes, uh, at that time, uh, you can put by unanimous decision. Uh, minutes become public record as soon as they are complete, not at approval. So as soon as they're completed, they're public record. It must be published as required by law in the appropriate newspaper. Um, and then I think we also publish them on our website, do not. That doesn't satisfy the requirement of the newspaper, but, uh, it's just an added convenience for our citizens.
Finding zoning commission decisions, we, we usually publish just a decision by, like, the board adjustment or the, or the planning zoning commission, but we do not necessarily publish the minutes.
Does the minutes have, well, the publish, is it the date and time of the meeting?
It's just.
Decision made and the, the votes?
Right.
Yeah. So in essence, it's a minute, right?
It's not.
Do you have some of 15 minutes, that information now?
Okay, it's in a, it's in a book, and if somebody wants it, I can certainly.
Right, right.
I do not.
But will you publish the decisions, you know, the date, time of the, the decision made at the meeting and who voted in favor or against or unanimous?
That's fine.
Yeah.
So on the completed minutes, that being approved minutes?
No.
Yeah.
No, no, no. They're public record when they're completed.
So currently we publish after they're approved, don't we, on our website?
That's fine.
Yeah, it's, if they ask for it.
If, if someone comes in after a board meeting and says, I want a copy of those minutes, and as soon as, uh, uh, Tammy has completed those, she gives a copy. Now they're unapproved. Um, and then the approved minutes then are the ones that we publish on the website.
And Luke.
Closed sessions. Uh, there are 12, uh, subsections that allow for a meeting to be closed, uh, as it references at tops, that are only to be held by two thirds vote uh, of the members of the body, uh, or all members present, uh, and only after signing one of the following reasons. To review or discuss a record, which is required and authorized by state or federal law to be kept confidential as a condition to retain federal funding. Uh, that might be EMA, that might be EMA, that might be, uh, things that, uh, we have to know. Uh, in particular, what's the requirements regarding confidentiality, uh, pertaining to federal law, uh, so that we do not lose funding, uh, from the federal government. To discuss application for a patent, a lot of these, it covers all, all of the boards, so some of these won't apply. Uh, but, uh, um, they're there nonetheless. To discuss strategy with counsel on matters that are currently or may eminently be in litigation, uh, that's, uh, subsection C. To discuss contents of a licensing examination, initiate disciplinary investigation or proceeding if the body is involved with the licensing or examining. Back hearings, um, whether or not to suspend a student. Um, but now this is a little different than what we're typically faced with, okay, for the schools. Um, if the parent wants the meeting to remain open, it shall be open. If you go down to, uh, I to evaluate the professional competency of an individual, say, for instance, someone, uh, in the employ of the county, the individual must request a closed session. Uh, so the powers of the individual in those two different types of situations, uh, are opposite. Okay? Um, so if you're, you know, evaluating the professional competency of, of an employee, uh, they have to request that that be in closed session. I skipped one there. Uh, well, actually, to discuss the decision to be rendered in a contested case, that's implied that you don't do contested cases. Um, but to avoid disclosure of specific law enforcement matters, um, which if disclosed would enable law violators to avoid detection or facilitate, uh, disregard for requirements imposed by law. There's my sheriff over there and, uh, um, Lori, uh, both are the two, both subsection G and H deals with law enforcement. Okay, so law enforcement, um, investigation reports and those types of things are confidential with the exception of the date and time of the offense and the limited facts and circumstances surrounding it, which are considered publicly protected.
Do you have to inform an individual that they have the right to go into closed session?
You should.
I think that.
You should.
Re-.
Courtesy.
Yeah.
Ignorance of the law is no excuse, but I think, you know, just a reminder, hey, this is going to be an open session unless you specifically request it to be closed. Um, I think that's just common courtesy. And then to discuss the purchase or sale of real estate, that'll come up periodically throughout all of your tenure, okay? Um, you know, if we're looking at doing something to, uh, whether it be to purchase or sell real estate, those things can be in closed session. However, different than the other minutes and recordings of a closed session, this closed session, uh, minutes and recording, uh, are open as soon as, uh, the transaction is dropped or completed. So the public can have access to the discussions held in closed session, because the only requirement of that is to not give competitors an opportunity to outbid us or do something that would, that would, um, basically prejudice us. So, uh, that's the reason for it. It's not for any other purpose, and they're available, that's available to the public upon the conclusion. Now, realize that that may be a year and a half down the road. Those minutes and the recordings only have to be kept for a minimum of one year. So you may have to retain those, uh, closed session records longer than what is required by, um, chapter 20 or section 21.5. Uh, to further, can you discuss records concerning security procedures and emergency preparedness for the protection of the government and the government's employees, any visitors that come into the courthouse uh, that are considering under the care and protection of the government's property, to discuss patient care quality and process improvement, um, initiatives in a meeting, uh, of a public hospital, obviously doesn't apply, or other sections, the article may permit a government agent to be closed meeting. So there is really one other section, uh, one other chapter that applies to the county government that's not listed there, but is, uh, or does qualify as a meeting that would be capable of being closed. And that's under chapter, uh, chapter 20, it's section 20.17, sub 3. Exempt, exempts negotiations, uh, strategy meetings of public employers or employee organization mediation and the deliberative process of arbitrageurs and the collective bargaining process. Okay, uh, that is specifically exempted from the open meetings. However, the first few sessions in which the two sides present their initial bargaining position, positions shall be open to the public. Okay, so when you get into the deliberation of it, that's when it can be closed. But the first two sessions where you're sharing the positions are considered open meetings. Procedures to be used during closed sessions, um, no additional topics other than what's on the agenda for the closed session can be discussed. The session must be recorded and detailed minutes must be taken. Um, I mentioned here, obviously, earlier, uh, members, uh, that the, 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 the recording and the detailed minutes must be kept for at least one year. I think, you know, basically, I assume we keep them forever, um, you know, for as long as, uh, we can continue to, to maintain storage to the capacity for those types of things. Uh, members who would otherwise have access to the closed session may get access to the closed session recording and minutes. So if, um, you know, you, you want to go back and, and see what the minutes or the recordings have, you know, and you guys were capable of being in closed session, you had access to. Okay, so you're not worried, you, you don't have to worry about, well, once they're closed, you know, and they're in the auditor's office, no one can access. If you would have had the availability to be part of that closed session, you can get access to the recording. Uh, but, and I think you guys all know this, uh, final action has to be done in open session. Okay? So, you know, you have to discuss them, um, and then when you are in a situation where the discussion is done, uh, you close, you open the session, and then you make the decision in open session.
How much of the closed session can be discussed in open session?
None.
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 That's, that, my opinion. So you cannot have any information that was shared in closed session determined in open session.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct. The decision is made in, uh, the decision only is made in open. So anything in closed is subject to, uh, uh, non-disclosure, uh, rules and, and laws associated with us.
So there's, there's no reference can be made.
Any reference that it was in closed session, due to the discussion in closed session.
But you can't reference anything in closed session and open.
You can't say, because of information X, Y, Z that we got.
Right.
Which subsequently happened in closed session.
Yeah, right.
And I. Yeah, I know what your point is there. Um, yeah.
Yeah. Probably to happen, uh, um, back when you were making the decision on, um, the change, uh, for the wages of the employees. You guys discussed in closed session with your employment council, your employment attorney, um, those things, and, you know, you, on numerous cases, we can't share that information. Okay? But, you know, and, and, you know, there's, 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 uh, requirements for that. I mean, the reason you have closed session is in some way, shape, or form, you know, that information could harm the, the government body.
Right.
Right? That's why it's closed. Otherwise, it's all open.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what Roger's referring to is conversations about the pipeline specifically.
That we had in closed session and that stays in closed.
It stays in closed session. It stays in closed session even when you're outside of the.
Correct. This is the point that I'm trying to get across to everybody, that we have to be very careful.
Yeah.
What we say to the public, but what we learn in closed session.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, the most important thing to remember is nothing in the law requires you to have a closed session. If you feel comfortable discussing a potential real estate purchase in open, you can do that. Okay, um, you know, and again, gets back to that if it's ambiguous, if you don't know, if you're, obviously you can ask me, that also provides some protection. I'll get into that a little bit. But, uh, uh, you know, nothing requires you to do that. You know, if the board is, is comfortable with discussing something that could provide competitors, so to speak, uh, an opportunity to jump in and, and get ahead of us, you can do that. Nothing requires. All right, so now open records, up to you guys. Except for the ones that have, uh, uh, committees or, or, um, uh, boards subject to the open, open meetings, open records. All government bodies, officials, employers are covered by chapter 22. This is, uh, as I said earlier, the, the open records.
Okay.
Uh, there must be the, the lawful custodian is the first, it's going to be covered, uh, by the disclosure of open records. Uh, record is a broad term. Uh, it is, uh, um, defined liberally. The term record includes all documents, tape, or other information stored and preserved in any medium of or belonging to a government, governmental body. Um, also includes all records relating to investment in public funds. Uh, it also includes electronic communications, uh, such as emails, websites, or blogs. Okay? Who has the right to examine public records? Everyone. Anyone in there? Uh, we, I mean, there's, if someone comes and asks for it, you got to give it, if it's a public record, to. When you get it to them, or how long it takes to get to them, depends on the record, and we'll get into that. But it doesn't matter what they're going to use it for. They're entitled to, to, to have that. There are two exceptions. Um, well, actually, before the two exceptions, and we can't, we're not going to store public records in a private facility like a storage warehouse. If the word, word is part of the access, or, uh, clerk, or recorder's office, I can sort of, they.
My office.
All of them are.
We have it taken down in the basement of the book. Well, that would just be the money they took in for those happenings. So, yeah, they're all good.
So, you know, in order to, uh, try and avoid public records, we can't store them offsite and say, well, we don't have them in the courthouse, we don't have access to them. We have to get those, if we are storing them offsite, then we have to have and get access to them and provide those public records to the public. To exceptions, governmental bodies can control the terms and conditions of the examination of non-confidential records stored within geographic computer databases. Um, and they can establish or must establish reasonable rates for the examination of these records, uh, because those are a little bit more complicated to get, and then data processing software, which I'll get into in a little bit. When do they need to be available for public examination? So we can provide and must provide records, uh, however they request them. Uh, they can come in. I know that, uh, you probably have people come in, you're carrying in your office and see your records in the back. Uh, those, the time for that is nine to noon at one to four, Monday through Friday. Um, they can come in and view the record, photocopy, or, uh, definitely photocopy unless you ask the, the person who's the custodian to photocopy, but they have pictures of it, uh, and, uh, view them publicly during those times.
Can I interject?
Sure can.
Point, um, we have the naturalization logs that we took from the clerk report, but we are not, they're not in my custody. I'm just holding them on the shelf.
Right.
I can't certify that document like I can a mortgage and make a certified copy of that. Uh, that said, it was either going to bring him to my office, or they tie in with the word death of marriage, or put him over at the historical building. Uh, are those records that, for a brief while, I mean, they're really not mine to monitor, but I do keep them. So.
So you wouldn't be considered a legal custodian.
No, no.
Court parties, they'd have to access those to put it in court. You have no idea whether or not they're, they're potentially confidential. Uh, so, yeah, those types of records would have to go through the legal custodian. Once again, getting to that, um, point you talked about earlier, that if, you know, you're, you're hiring or have someone who's storing those records for you, or the county is doing it, um, they, they still have to provide access to the legal custodian. Those have to, have to be the one providing access. I don't know, that'll cut confidential or not. Um, so getting back on, you know, the most common confidential record, uh, I'm saying most common because there are 75 subsections regarding confidentiality. I'm not going to go through all 75. Many of them won't apply to, to any of the, uh, the public officials, um, in the county. Uh, so I will hit upon the ones that do. I would say that as custodians of, of records, public records, you should be familiar with this closed section. Okay, it's, um, it's important to know 22.7, because if something doesn't fall within 22.7, which is the subsection dealing with all of the, the confidential records, uh, then it's public record, more than likely. Okay, and I'll get into that definition in a moment. Uh, so most common confidential records are medical records, uh, trade secrets protected by law, uh, obviously in my realm, the work product of an attorney related to litigation or against a public body. Peace officers investigative reports, we mentioned this in, uh, uh, earlier. Uh, when you're dealing with investigative reports, we can release as far as, uh, public records, the date, time, specific location, and media facts and circumstances surrounding the crime. The, uh, and we do that typically by press release. Uh, they're done many times. Everything else in, uh, investigative report is confidential. And, you know, realistically, and I did, I got in a debate with another attorney regarding whether we can ever release them. My opinion is that we can't. Um, but generally speaking, I don't have a problem with it because usually down the road, once we're done with what we do, um, then typically. then typically we'll get requests for law enforcement investigative reports involving an accident for personal insurance type of lawsuit. You know, they're going to be able to get them. And I think we've talked about this, for instance, and so you guys know, a lot of times I like that we have a subpoena because we can release those by court. That protects us. But generally, I think we have a pretty good communication back and forth when there's something that's kind of questionable in that regard. Appraisal information concerning sale or purchase of property for public purposes prior to the announcement of the project. So in that situation, they'd be confidential. Certain personnel information such as age, race, sex, address and social security numbers, that's, that's kind of common sense. Telephone numbers, reasons for sick leave held in confidential personal records of government employees, but does not include the dates and times of the use of sick leave or vacation. Information that if released would cause the loss of federal funding, I mentioned that earlier too. There may be a situation where the federal government says this confidential record, if we release it, could jeopardize our federal funding. Information submitted which is not required by law submitted, the kind of the catchall from someone outside of government and the lawful custodian could reasonably those persons would be discouraged from submitting. You know, like, for instance, like whistleblower type of situation, something like that. You don't want to discourage the person or the public from bringing that to the attention of, of the government. And then in situations where it's possible, we could redact the information that is going to protect that person's identity but yet still provide the remaining portion of what their report or information is. Was amended in two thousand and eleven to include as far as public records, the name and detailed information about compensation of an employee, including any written agreement about terms of employment. So anything of value given to an employee, including paid benefit, paying benefits, vacation, satisfaction and retirement benefits. Employment dates, positions held, educational background, previous employment and the fact that the employee was discharged as a result of the disciplinary action. So those would be considered information that we can provide and can be made public. And then there's several exemptions that were added for employment security. Public record law allows the release of confidential information when ordered by court, by the lawful custodian of the records or by another person to be authorized to release such information. By a subpoena, okay, or a court order. So in situations where we have confidential records and the person has pursued some sort of legal action and the court says you have to disclose those, then at that point in time, they can be capable of being disclosed. There's usually a process that goes, that happens in that type of situation. The records are disclosed to the court only. And then the judge reviews those records to see, depending on what the nature of the lawsuit is, whether or not they can be disclosed to the parties. Obviously, if there's a legal dispute, sometimes this comes up where there is a settlement. The, in, in dealing with litigation and lawsuits, obviously that fits within the confidential records provision of the code of chapter twenty-two. So if there's a lawsuit or legal dispute, including an allegation that the entity had violated a rule or statute, after the dispute is resolved, the government body must prepare a summary that indicates the identity of the parties involved, the nature of the dispute and the terms of the settlement. Okay, so most of the time, the documents that are in the litigation or the lawsuit, as far as, say for instance, mediation. Mediation is confidential by, by court. You know, and, and oftentimes in mediation settlements are reached. So those types of documents are confidential, maintain their confidential status, correct? But we would be required then to summarize what they say, okay? So summarize what the identities of parties involved, oftentimes that's already known and the nature of the dispute and the terms of the settlement. And this is, this is interesting, we're talking about minutes. Before they're approved, they're still public record. There is an exception in situations where, let's say for instance, I'm creating something for the board. Rough draft of something and someone says, hey, I know you're creating this document for the board, I want to have access to. Probably for example, because I'm an attorney and it's work product, it's automatically confidential. But let's say I'm not, let's say it's Doug or Karen or Donna creating that document and someone requests it. At that point that we're creating, it's not, it's not open records. It's not, it's not considered something that has to be disclosed, could be, okay? But if we submit it to you for your evaluation and review, and I'm going to take me out of that because, you know, even in that situation, sometimes it could be considered confidential.
Like we could use a handbook as an example.
Right, the handbook for.
A, a draft, draft change to the handbook.
In her position right there, if they request it, she doesn't have to disclose it, but if she gives it to you for your review, then it's, it's a, an open record, right?
A- after we agree to it or?
No.
Just as.
Soon as you get it through review, then it's open.
Okay, so we agree with it or not, or try to amend it or say, okay, bring it back?
Well, that's fine.
Doesn't, doesn't.
Yeah, it's still open record. That may qualify as if you're discussing it in amongst three or more of you, then it'd be an open meeting, you'd have to.
Right.
Agenda, but we're dealing now just with the records as to when they have to be disclosed. Because we still have to have the ability to kind of, you know, just free form, free thought documents to create. And so just our initial rough draft containing misspellings and grammatical errors and, and information that at least provides something to build off of is not considered an open record until we give it to you to review it. At that point in time, it's open.
So if we start a process to make changes to the handbook and it was in the process for three months and, and then it got emailed to the board on Friday for the previous Tuesday coming up, Friday is when it would be public, not two months before, correct?
Well, as long as he says, as long as we're reviewing it as public.
Once we get it.
Once you get it.
Yeah.
But I'm going to get to the last thing here shortly. Remember, what's the overriding principle openness? So if someone, say for instance, a document's being created, I don't know, policy by Derek in the IT department. You know, and he's coming up with thoughts and ideas as far as what he would like to see the county do regarding our IT department or regarding, you know, our, the security of our IT. When he creates it and he's amending it and approving it and it isn't something that he's comfortable to provide to the five of you for your review? If someone comes and asks him for, hey, what you working on, I want to see it, he doesn't have to share that with them. Now, should he? Well, I mean, I don't see why not. I don't see why that wouldn't be shared because as long as the person who's requesting it knows, hey, this is a work in process, this is not something that's been presented to anybody to make a decision on. There shouldn't be any hesitation for him to, to share that. But is he required to do so under chapter twenty-two? No. Once he gets it and he's comfortable with the document and says, okay, you know, I fixed everything and this is kind of where I think we should go, open to further suggestions and discussions and submits it to the five of you for review or, you know, telling me to send to the five of you or whatever. At that point in time, he's required to submit that to anybody that requests or provide that to anybody that requests that record. Does that clear that up a little bit more? As long as you have it, regardless of whether it's in final form, it needs to be disclosed. And we had that not too long ago regarding, you know, one that was red, redlined, okay? And you guys got next, oh, yeah, it's open record, give it to them. Okay. This is the timeframe, basically most of the records request can be satisfied immediately or very soon after the request. You know, they want a copy of the, of the deed. Something that happens regularly, this, you know, copy happens probably that day, if not the next day, depending on the request. If there's a valid reason for delay and it's reasonable, should not exceed ten business days or in no event twenty calendar days. That's the deadline, basically. Records, bottom line there, when I go into that, record custodian should work with the requester to ensure that the corrupt records are released and as timely and mannered as possible. And I think we talked about this in one of our department head meetings. The best way to, to handle public record requests would be communication with the person requesting it. Oftentimes, you know, that can, that can really alleviate any potential delays that may go beyond the twenty days. You know, in a situation where depending on the records, it's very difficult to meet that. Communicate to the person requesting it, they'll probably say, okay, you know, get it to me as soon as you can afterwards. As long as there's notification that there's purposeful delay, I think communication is extremely important, communication solves a lot. And then there's, the IPIP actually, or our public information board actually gives kind of a four-point suggestion as far as best practices. The kind, when you receive the public records request, contact the Requester to acknowledge that you received it and provide them with a probable timeline for returning, unless it's going to be, you know, unless it's your reply to them is here is. Make additional contact in the event of a potential delay to discuss possible ways to process requests in time and manner. Work diligently to retrieve and release the records and release the records as they are ready unless the Requester is asked that the record's being compiled and then released again. Okay, so if it's a multiple part request, as soon as you got one ready, then it goes, unless the person says, I want it all now. Databases, a lot of what we do is, are, you know, the information is held in databases. The software that we use is confidential, it's subjecting proprietary laws. But the records contained in the database can be open or a combination of open and closed, depending on what they have in there. Records cannot be withheld because they contain both non-confidential and confidential material. So in other words, in a situation where there is both confidential and non-confidential material, the record can be redacted to remove the confidential material and then release what is actually public records. Supervision and fees, obviously, the records, if a person's viewing the records, there is a requirement that the person be supervised, we don't want people destroying, changing or some way manipulating our public records. So they can be supervised, that would be an in-person, as I mentioned earlier, an in-person type of review, they have to have the ability to do that. If it's a request made by writing telephone or electronic means, then obviously we'll have to provide that.